Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, June 20th, City Council Work Session. Mayor Buckley is not able to join us today, so I will be chairing the meeting. Today, we have a very incredible presentation that I am personally excited for, from Urban Three, for the final results of our land and infrastructure valuation study. Joining us at the table are Mr. Lashinsky, our Chief of Comprehensive Planning, and Mr. Joe Manicosi from Urban Three. Did I pronounce that right, sir? Excellent. So, I am going to first offer the floor to Mr. Lashinsky. Oh, I apologize, everyone. I am first going to call the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I will offer the floor to Mr. Lashinsky.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, now by our rules handed to me by the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Yes, sir. The next item, or the first item on the agenda is Presentations, ID 9724, Final Presentation from Our Land and Infrastructure Valuation Study. Presenter, Chief of Comprehensive Planning, Mr. Eric Lashinsky.
Mr. Lashinsky, sir.
Thank you, sir. Eric Lashinsky, Chief of Comprehensive Planning. Happy to be here for something other than the comprehensive plan today. Oh, yeah. I'm really happy to present to you Joe Manicosi from Urban Three, a consulting firm from Asheville, North Carolina, that we've been working with for the last year on an economic analysis of the city's most important asset, our land base. It's what pays for a lot of the services we have in the city. I want to thank Alderman Shanomeyer, Acting Mayor Shanomeyer, for bringing this idea to our attention. He sponsored funding maybe two years ago for this study, and we kicked it off about a year ago. And I gave a brief presentation last December that you might recall. It was based on just very preliminary work that Urban Three had done, and we had a good discussion at that meeting. What Joe is going to present today is far more thorough and frankly fascinating. Like you, I consider myself somebody who knows a lot about Annapolis, our many neighborhoods and quirks, and I found a lot of enlightening information in what Urban Three has presented. It's a study, not a plan, meaning they're taking a critical look at the city, and it's an objective analysis of what we have today. We're doing it to help our decision-making. They work all over the country with towns, cities, counties, states. I think their analysis is most valuable in a place like Annapolis where we can't expand anymore. You know, we have what we have, we're bound by water on most sides, we have to be extremely strategic and efficient in how we use our land and make good decisions on that. And so, I think what Joe is going to share today, it's intended to help in that regard. So, I hope you'll have an open mind, and there'll be plenty of time for questions. I think it'd be best if he could just go through the presentation, and then we'll have plenty of time for questions, so we can go back to whatever, whatever you'd like to see in the presentation, so. Alderman Shanomeyer, or anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lashinsky. Just for some background, I first became aware of Urban Three and Mr. Manicosi's work through the Strong Towns Movement, and specifically through an organization called Not Just Bikes, urban planner and lecturer based out of the Netherlands. I knew this before our wonderful trip over there. And what we've seen frequently over budget cycles in my time here has been, we want to do amazing things, but we bump into not having the resources to do so. We are not unique like this. This is something every municipality, every county jurisdiction has to deal with, but we always fell into what I felt a very binary choice of raise taxes or cut services. And what Mr. Manicosi is going to show is there is a third, better way to move forward. So, I'm very excited for this presentation. Mr. Manicosi, if you could please take us away.
Thank you. Is this, okay, we're on. So, I'm going to go through this presentation. I also have a bunch of other presentations set up, so we can do, I call it PowerPoint DJ, and I can start mixing in some other stuff from other communities if you want. And I'm sure you're going to have a lot of questions. We do do work in 42 different states, Canada, Australia, New Zealand. Actually, this picture right here is Auckland, New Zealand's economic model on the front cover there. I'm going to give you a lot of information, I'm going to talk about a lot of really nerdy stuff, but if there's one takeaway that you can have from my presentation is to think of your community like a form of DNA. You have DNA in you, kind of like the way that I do. This is how I started my life when I was three months old, and I actually had hair. My mom put a barrette in my hair. I'm not making that up, unfortunately, but this is my path. I'm going to be Papa, whether I like it or not. There's a lot of things I can't do to change that trajectory, whether I like it or not, it's in me. I'm 100% Italian, I have a lot of bad habits that are Italian habits, or more importantly, I look at this guy, my dad. So, being genetically Italian, we eat a lot of food that's not good for us, but I also have a predisposition to heart disease in my family, so I know the choices that I eat are going to have an effect on me. I saw that, my dad had a seven bypass heart surgery. What do you call that, a septuple? You know, so I know that's in me, so I have to exercise, I have to eat right. I had salad last night. You know, these are things that I have to do to grow smart into the future. So, cities are the same way. Annapolis has a DNA in it, good and bad. I'm going to show you the DNA along the way, but just realize these are choices that you have, and also look for models going forward. So, if there's anything I can put forward, think of yourself, when you go into comp plan meetings, who is our comparable? Who is our grandparent? Who is our grandmother or grandfather? Who's had those heart attacks or growth patterns? And how do I bring those to this community? And you have some of those within you. I live in Asheville now. Incidentally, let me take a step back. One of the reasons why I do this work is because of, I don't mention her enough, is my mom. My mom has a high school education. I grew up with food stamps and welfare checks when I was a kid, and they pretty much, my community torched downtown down and built a Revolutionary War fort when I was a kid. And basically, they killed themselves. There's no way to economically grow out of removing your downtown and having a wooden fort that's non-taxable. My Uncle Joe's pastry shop was taken in eminent domain, and I learned from this, seeing my community basically economically collapse. It's not that these people were evil, they just made bad decisions because they had the wrong information. They thought this would save them, they thought it was a silver bullet, and it failed. So, part of what I try to do, and I've had conversations with both of my parents my entire life, how do I make it easy for my mom to understand what's happening? And how do I bring information to her so we can have a conversation? So, I live in Asheville now. Asheville counter to my hometown, they went bankrupt in the 1930s, but they didn't eliminate anything. So, this is 1990s Asheville, just boarded up buildings. We had this attitude that we weren't city people, we weren't Charleston, we weren't New Orleans, we're just rural mountain people, we don't like downtowns, and we just sort of gave up on these buildings. I ended up working for this guy's company, this is Julian Price. He inherited a bunch of money and put $25 million into a for-profit real estate development company. Our job was fixing buildings, getting apartments downtown, but also getting businesses started. So, he started a nightclub, The Orange Peel, which is right here, one of the top five nightclubs in the entire country, first vegetarian restaurant. We started making places for people and doing things like this. This is one of our buildings before and after. Incidentally, the banks wouldn't finance this because these were 400 square foot apartments. So, just really quick test, show of hands, who in this room would live in a 400 square foot apartment? Okay, let me change the question. Who in this room has lived in a 400 square foot apartment? That's our market study, right? The banks had this bias about what people would choose, and we're like, well, there's lots of diversity in our community, surely there's people that are recently graduated, recently new to town, recently divorced, that just want smaller space. So, we made that happen, and that was 99% leased up ever since. There are biases in the marketplace and how it operates, and the questions that people put out there are framing that bias. So, how do you change that? And that's kind of what we did with that. But what we found ourselves doing is constantly talking with our elected officials. So, for the city attorney there, this is what the Oxford American Dictionary says about the word incorporate, "To constitute a company, a city, or other organizations legal corporation." So, when I talk to my city councilors, I say, "Y'all are on the board of directors for a multi-billion dollar corporation, period. There is no difference between you and us in real estate development, other than the fact that you have an elected board of directors. But you have to manage this real estate entity, and it's not just your city, it's your county, it's your state, it's our country." Joe Biden said this on the Stephen Colbert Show, "The United States is the largest corporation in the world." And I'm such a nerd, I looked it up. There's the US code that lists us as a federal corporation right there, if you want the actual law. So, you have to understand the cash flow of this stuff, right? So, my city at $14 billion of taxable value, so we're 125,000 people with $14 billion, that's seven times the value of Ted Turner. Does Ted Turner just look at Facebook? Does Ted Turner just ask random people what their opinions are? Or is Ted Turner looking at data? So, let's start talking about this, let's see what's going on. So, my city is, oh, by the way, my city can't annex land, so you all are landlocked. My state made it illegal for my city to annex land because, welcome to North Carolina, that's how they operate. So, those acres are all that we have, so you better mine them. And if you talk to anybody that farms, farmers are always talking in economic terms, what's the crop yield per acre, the water per acre, the labor per acre? It's units of economics. So, let's do the same thing with the city. So, this is one of our crops. We took this building and rehabbed it, we put in retail at the ground floor, office at the second floor, and residential above it. And we wouldn't have done this if it weren't for the city doing the streetscape projects. So, to the credit of Asheville, the city and the county both invested in streetscape projects, parking garages, keeping their offices downtown, doing those things, and folks like us followed suit in fixed buildings. So, thank you, city, for the garbage can, the bike rack, two benches and a street tree. People in town, people see Asheville as a fairly liberal price, but we're Appalachia, we're very conservative. There are people that said that we were subsidized for the city to do this, and it was kind of comic, I was like, really? Okay, $30,000 worth of public investment? We took the taxable value from $300,000 to $11 million. So, that asset was sitting in the community, and we polished it and grew it 3,500%. Do y'all have a 401K plan that grows by 3,500%? Wouldn't you like that? Go out and buy 3,500% more garbage cans. And again, the pushback from people are like, "Well, that's cute, Joe, that's $11 million. We have this Walmart, this $20 million." Fair enough, that's almost double the value, right? That's a big number, 20 million bucks. But to be fair, it consumed 34 acres of my farm to get there, right? We blew through 34 acres of Asheville to make that happen versus point two. If you're looking at the overall gross value, you're missing the point of productivity. So, we're actually producing, per acre, 100 times more property taxes, double the sales taxes, a lot more residents, obviously, and more jobs. So, what you find is the stuff on the blue side of the ledger is producing more wealth for you, the stuff on the red side of the ledger is not. It's that simple. So, you know, it's kind of simple economics. I want you to realize this isn't scary math that I'm doing here, this is fifth grade division. I don't have a degree in finance, I'm trained as an architect like Eric, we like to draw pictures, but what I'm trying to do is find a way, why does the system work the way that it does, and how do we best leverage it for your communities to make better decisions? So, think of it this way. When we talk about cars, we don't talk about cars on a miles per tank basis, right? Could you imagine if I came in here and said my truck gets 650 miles per tank? You immediately know that's silly. You know that all tanks are different sizes, and we don't say miles per tank, we say miles per gallon, and the numbers just changed, and we should all be driving BMW Asetas, that's the most potent thing. I'm making a joke here, out of 1955 technology, it's better than 2020 technology, but that's the reality of economics. We're comfortable with this with a gallon of gasoline, which is what, four bucks? We should have the same comfort around a $4 million piece of land. So, taking all the data that we have in 60 different cities, for every dollar of taxes, somebody in county, single family pays to the county corporation per acre. Their brother or sister in the prime city is paying five times that to the same county. So, remember, y'all are Arrendell County, Evrendel County taxpayers. I always mess that up. But you're shareholders in that corporation. So, the county needs to be all over having a conversation with you about the wealth that you're creating for the county as well. And then here's the Walmart, here's the mall, this is a two-story building that's mixed use, three-story building and six-story. I kept this under the high-rise threshold, high-rise threshold is over this, it's seven stories. This is all just reasonable urban buildings and mixed use. So, really what's happening is, the reason why modern America builds this stuff over here is because it costs less overall. For me, as a developer that builds that, if I hang on to a mall or a strip mall, I want to minimize my tax load in your community. And I'll give you a story of that. I am a nerd, I hang out at weird conferences, I went to an assessor conference, I don't know if you all hang out with assessors. Could you imagine 3,000 of them in one meeting? It was very square. This guy did this amazing presentation on how cheap Walmarts are for the keynote one morning. And I'm watching him do this amazing presentation, how crappy their buildings are, and I'm in the back of the room thinking, "This is awesome." I mean, think how smart that is, one meeting, 3,000 properties get their property taxes lowered with one presentation. Because the assessors are agnostic, if it's a cheap building, it's a cheap building, right? Don't hate the player, hate the game, but you better understand the game. So, I went up to the microphone and I asked Mr. Terrell, I said, "What's the useful life of one of your buildings?" And he honestly shot back, he goes, "15, 20 years, we designed the building to depreciate it as fast as possible, we'll tear that building down and build another one, we don't care about the value, that's inconsequential, the building's a throwaway." Is your corporation that? Are you in this for a 15-year horizon? Or a 15-year commitment from somebody building in your community? If that's what you want, great, like, that's the life cycle of a cat. I'm a dog person, sorry, it's a joke. You know, this is their commitment to your community, this is what they're bringing to your table. And if that works for you, awesome, but you better pencil that out. So, I would argue that people don't see this, for one, is we don't talk about it that way, we just assume the market's bringing us something, and that some great forces of economic nature are making this happen, but the reality of it is we can't see those forces in action live. So, I try to find a way to make pictures of the whole thing. So, think of it this way, if I can show you your brain with your brainstem activity in blue versus your creative thought process in green, I can actually take a picture inside your skull and showing you what's going on, why can't I do it for my community? So, here is my community. We did this when I was on our Downtown Association Board, and I was the executive director, and I'm not making this up, our state representative called us a cesspool of sin. Welcome to Asheville. And being very polite southerners, we're just like, "Well, did he really mean it?" And he actually doubled down when we asked him about it, and said, "It's not the good people of Bundling County, it's just that downtown, that's where all the freaks and weirdos are, that's the cesspool." What do you do with something like that? So, I've actually presented this map. Here's non-taxable in gray, so this is part of the Blue Ridge Parkway, Mount Mitchell and Pisgah Forest, so they're non-taxable. So, just to be crude about it, they don't pay me taxes, I don't care, right? Green is low value, so I've got low value up here in Big Ivy. Purple is high value. This big purple splotch right there, that's the Biltmore House. That one parcel is worth $100 million, that one house is worth $100 million. I know y'all don't have a house that valuable, because I've looked at your data, but that's really important, right? And when the Cecil family shows up at a council meeting, we all genuflect and thank them for their time, they're very important people, but it's really not fair, because it's 180,000 square foot house sitting on 8,000 acres of land. Anybody have 180,000 square foot house? This is like having the biggest gas tank. So, rather than total value, here's value per acre. So, now the map just changed, let me show it to you in 3D. So, when I show this model, I'm showing this to my community and asking them, I'm asking folks out in the county, I'm like, "Where's downtown?" And they're like, "The big purple mountain." I'm like, "Exactly." I can see where my downtown is, right in the middle of the model. I can also see our little cousin, this is Black Mountain over here, Black Mountain's 13,000 people, it's about 10 miles away from Asheville, I can see its little downtown popping up, the tallest building's three stories. We can also see how low-value sprawl is on the south side, right there in the model. And for folks out here in Fairview, they think they're paying a lot of taxes, they have no idea what we're paying in taxes. Now, remember, we're all paying six mils in county taxes across this model, the county's getting a disproportionate share of money out of my downtown. So, rather than hating on me, send me a thank you card, right? You know, it's like, "We're glad that you live out there, that's cool, but we're paying for you to live out there." And that's what we showed in this model. Additionally, and I can touch on this later, there's matters of equity here. This is our version of Brooklyn across the river, this is West Asheville, this is a mid-to-low-wealth neighborhood, there's a lot of public housing in this neighborhood, and it's actually more tax productive than a higher-wealth neighborhood that's on the east side over by the Blue Ridge Parkway. You can see that in the data right there. So, this model has an ability to open up different levels of conversation, because you can see what's happening in the model. This is taller than that, right? So, outside of what's going on downtown. So, for you all, you have a different tax system than North Carolina, every community, we have to learn your tax system. This is looking at all the different states across the model and how they're funded at a local level. When I say local, that's city and county combined. Y'all are sitting over here, you're about a little over 50% in property tax, a little bit of sales tax, and you're a different kind of state. In Maryland, you have a lot of intergovernmental distribution that is coming over here. If you're, let's say, let's find Ohio, here's Ohio, their dark blue is actually local income tax, which is different from a lot of places. But you generally don't want to be just to your right with Louisiana, Arkansas, and Alabama, they run their cities mostly off sales tax, which is insane. Think about what happens in a recession, you don't buy a boat, you're not buying a car, you're not buying a TV. So, all of a sudden, you crater your government, because you can't afford your taxes. So, you're actually, other than what you're dependent on with the state, you're mostly property tax. So, the way that the tax systems work, this is North Carolina, our market value should equal our tax value, we have a couple of exemptions if you're a disabled veteran or something like that, or over the age of 65, but the only thing that we can control is the mill rate, which is what we tax ourselves. Y'all have this kind of, there's several steps, you have a phase in value, you have homestead credits that we don't have, we don't differentiate between a homeowner and a renter in our state, also between a homeowner and somebody that lives in Florida and owns a house in Asheville. They pay the same tax rate we do, which is unfair, but that's North Carolina. Your phase in value is kind of interesting. So, in, let's say, 2021, there's an original value of a house and it gets reassessed to 550, you don't immediately jump up, like, in other states, you would immediately jump up from 350 to 550. What y'all do is you basically say, "Okay, we're going to take three years of that value jump and break it and send it forward, three years." So, you're going to incrementally step up, so you're going to lower that feel of tax change over that time. It allows the homeowner to absorb that impact over time. The other thing that you do that's kind of a little weird is you restrict your revenues. So, your revenue growth caps at 10, in the county, it caps at 2%. Your costs don't do that. So, for those of y'all on council, you see your budgets, you see what the cost of a pipe is, the cost of asphalt, the cost of a fire truck, those aren't restricted to the same income restrictions, right? It's even worse for the county, they're at 2%. So, what was inflation two years ago was 7%. So, unfortunately, what's going on with the county, because they've restricted their revenue, they didn't restrict their costs, they essentially go broke every time there's inflation. Asphalt, in the year 2021 to 2022, asphalt went up 29% in one year, and you're capped at 10%. So, it feels good as a voter to vote for this stuff, it's a good promise to give to voters, but you also have to pay for things. Anyway, so this is kind of what's going on with the system, is that you actually don't grow up at this level because of the tax credits and also because of the caps. So, at the county, the county's growing down here in dark blue and not up here, and then for y'all, you're a little bit better, but still not catching up because of your 10% cap. You can't bump up to that rate, does that make sense? So, you could have three identical houses sitting side by side, this is what the market says it is, this is what the city says it's worth, and this is what the county says it's worth. So, if you're charging 2% taxes on that, this is what you should be charging the 2% on, this is what you are actually charging it on, and the county's actually worse. Now, unfortunately, you're tied to the county, so where their wealth goes, you go along with it or have to support it somehow. But here's your tax dollar. We like to make pictures that you can share with your citizens. So, for the tax dollar, when they see it, they might come after you and say, "You're getting all my tax dollars." It's like, "No, the county's getting almost as much as what the city's getting, and this is what the state gets out of that tax dollar." So, from a residential property, these are two properties side by side, a resident that's a renter and a resident that's got homestead, they'll both start at 600,000. This person gets to get knocked down to 550, they get the 10% cap, and let's say none of them have the home exemptions, this is the taxable value, and this is the tax rate. So, the tax rate's the same, but the value's different. So, the homeowner is being taxed, let's call it 7,900, while the renter is being taxed at that. So, there is a question of fairness, because of the homestead exemption, it doesn't help the renter. In South Carolina, a renter can actually apply for a homestead exemption, that they work in your community, they're working in a restaurant or the deli a block away from here, they can actually get that same exemption. So, just something to think about. Here's your budget. We just converted it into pie charts, we've got your revenue over here, and this is where you spend it, but basically, we're going to focus on that stuff, which is things that we can put on a map to show where it's coming from. And it's about 40% of your revenue. We actually, on the second part of the presentation, we'll add in all the service costs and utilities, so about, let's call it about 65% of your taxes. This is another way of looking at the information, this is called a Sankey chart or a butterfly diagram, but here's the money coming in, here's where it goes, and here's where it gets spent. Again, we do this as part of the project, so this is something you can share with citizens in the community. But here's the property tax section that we're mapping right there, which is a quite sizable part of your budget. Incidentally, we talked about this earlier today, but grants, grants are awesome, but it's a minuscule part of your community, but also something you can't necessarily rely on. A grant is something you have to apply for and win, you might not get one one year. So, it's not the most stable form of government, think of it as, you want to think of that as the icing on the cake and not necessarily depend on your cake for all of that. So, here's your total value, broken down, typically, the computer gives it to us like this, but what we did is we broke down the residential classes to make more categories down here from your feedback. So, this is kind of how you probably feel your neighborhoods, but the reality of it is, it kind of looks like this from the computer's perspective. Residential is fairly low value from a total value perspective. When you look at it from a per acre standpoint, you can see its potency in different neighborhoods, much more so than some of the larger lot commercial stuff along the main drags, the residential neighborhoods are coming in pretty hot in certain areas. But here it is in 3D. So, think of it this way, your tax rate is the same, like, think of a blanket that's the same thickness, and you throw it on top of this model, it's going to show you like a profile of where your revenue's coming from. The most potent building in your community is a Park Place condos. Do you live in them?
One bedroom.
Well, everybody should give you a hug for your tax productivity, you're really kicking it.
It's the density.
Yeah, the density, density, design, architecture, there's lots of things that go into it, but it's, it is what, you know, we're agnostic, this is just, we're going to show you a productivity model, that's it. So, this is how you produce taxes. So, your downtown's kind of in here, in this value, so you actually, you know, it's because you're here, I get the benefit, both a blessing and a curse, of going to other communities. I was sharing this earlier- I was sharing this earlier. I was in Gilbert, Arizona. Gilbert, Arizona is 273,000 people, and it's still called the town of Gilbert. Like, these people have no clue, and their downtown is two blocks long. They would kill for some of this stuff. But they mostly grew in post-war development patterns, which is very low density, very low development pattern. And it feels all right to go from farm field to that until you have to actually pay for the roads. And now they're kind of stuck. So you actually have some good stuff in your model that you can learn from, and you're actually doing some interesting stuff out here. So not everything needs to be purple, but this is what's carrying the freight in your community from a tax production standpoint. And you have other neighborhoods that are out here, and neighborhoods are what they are. They just don't produce that much when it comes to single-family detached dwelling. That's just the reality of that system. This is zooming out to the county, so you can see that. And you could, you know, here's Annapolis in here. Y'all are crushing it from a county standpoint. So as the county turns and converts farm fields out here, it's not really all that productive, you know? So that's just, and plus, they're also hamstrung by their 2% growth rate. So here's your city inside that model. So you are 2% of the county's land area. Yet that's the physical footprint. Your financial footprint is you're producing 8% of the county's taxes. So as a shareholder in the county, you take up a 1 to 4.5 ratio of physical to financial. You're actually net positive to the county at 4.5. Y'all follow me on that? So this is like, imagine if you had 10 people, you owned a shoe shop, and you had 10 employees, but one employee is churning out four times the shoe sales of everybody else. Like, that's a good thing. Your downtown is a shareholder of your city, is about 3% of the city's footprint. It's producing 13% of your property taxes. That's a 1 to 5 ratio of productivity, so the downtown's killing it for y'all. It's not the only thing. You can see ghosted around it. You have other top performers around your downtown that are doing all right, too. But let's not neglect your downtown to the county. So your downtown is 0.1% of the county's footprint. It's 1% of the production. It's a 1 to 22 ratio of productivity. So what this is showing you is what's good for the downtown is great for your city, but it's unbelievable for your county, right? So when's the last time the county was here to help with a Main Street project or a streetscape project or help with parking downtown? And in defense of the county, when's the last time y'all went to them and said, hey, we should work together? You know, so this is, again, it's just something to, we put this out there because you're in this cooperative corporation together. So start those conversations. Taxable, non-taxable, you're about 19% non-taxable. When we talked about this last night, Eric was like, wait a minute, that's low. And it's like, well, because the Navy's kind of outside that. Yeah.
Alderman Gay, we're going to allow Mr. Menakosi to finish the presentation, then bring in questions. So if folks have questions, please write them down, and we will get to them at a good stopping point in the show.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, there's no magic number here. My city's 33% non-taxable. Chapel Hill, North Carolina is 65% non-taxable. So it's kind of an arbitrary number, but it's just basically a measurement you want to take a look at. Well, I think everybody probably cognitively feels like the Navy campus is on your city, but it's not.
Oh, okay.
You know, because it is a big property, but it's not in your city limits.
Got it, got it.
If this were true, you know, if this were Asheville, this would be University of North Carolina at Asheville, but it's inside our borders, you know? So it is what it is. 19% is not huge. One of the reasons why, this is, we're going to do a little sidebar here for a second. This is Cheyenne, Wyoming, turning off all of the buildings. One of the reasons why I was at the assessor's conference was to show them this map. So this is just the land value per acre. If you see the key up here, land value per acre. So there's no buildings. And see this little neighbor here where everything's blue? Everybody's dirt is the same value per acre. One of the reasons why we do this is to test the model and see what's going on. But when I presented this in Cheyenne, I was like, what's going on here? Where this property is blue, it's 15,000 an acre, and when you cross the street, it doubles to 40,000. How does land double in value in the same zoning category? And the tax assessor raised her hand and just yells out at me. She goes, you don't understand. And I was like, what am I missing? And she goes, well, they have more land. The more land you have, the lower the value per acre. The mayor just starts laughing. And I was like, really? I get more of your community, and you give me a discount? And she goes, well, there's less people that can afford a large tract of land. When you have less people, there's less supply and demand in the marketplace. So it's got to be, and I was like, does it work that way with other limited commodities? Like, if I get a bigger diamond, is it cheaper? And she's like, well, no. And I've got, this person's got three miles of infrastructure, and this person over here has only got 200 feet. And she goes, we don't count infrastructure in the valuation. I was like, so you're just giving away infrastructure? And she goes, that's not our standard. We don't, that's just not part of our rules. So I went to the assessor's organization. I'm not making this up. Their magazine is called Fair and Equitable. And I said, how is this fair and how is it equitable? To their credit, they're like, it's not. And I was like, really? Where did this standard come from? Did Moses bring this to you? Like, where'd this come from? By the way, this joke kills them at the assessor's conference. And they're like, oh, we don't know where it came from. I'm like, how does this happen? What happens in the marketplace, right? Is it an invisible hand or is it this force that's going to make different things happen in your community? And as we're having the conversation, they're like, yeah, you should talk to Larry. I'm like, Larry who? They're like Larry Clark. I'm like, really? I just have to find one guy? And I did. I tracked him down in the hallway, and I showed him this map. And he goes, yeah, that's not fair. It's not equitable. We probably need to change it. It'll just take a little while to get through the system. Sorry, Joe. You think that people have this stuff down, but I just need you to realize there's a system in here that we need to interrogate. So here's your land model. No buildings. So what's going on here? Think of your little buildings on Main Street that are only two stories tall, and they sell for like 20 million bucks. The assessor knows that that building is not worth $20 million as a teardown. So, you know, the most replacement value is going to be 2 million bucks. So what they do is they shove all the building value into the dirt. Well, that's another way of saying that when you make a walkable pedestrian environment, you're actually creating value in your earth. One of the other things to see here, if you just zoom into the 2D version of this, let's just focus right there. You'll have a PDF of this whole thing. Well, make sure you get a copy of it. So these are just two neighborhoods side by side, the same creek access. Look at the land value here per acre versus the land value here per acre. Here they are. How is this fair where this one's $1 million an acre for the dirt and this is $180,000 an acre for the dirt?
This is Eastport. On the top is Nautilus Point, formerly Watergate Apartments. On the bottom is Severn House Apartments. So it's a rental community on the top and condo community on the bottom.
So it just, again, we just made this CAT scan so you have it, so you can start having conversations with the assessors, and you can start being aware of who's got the sticker gun in the grocery store. Remember, like, you're just collecting taxes at the cash register. Somebody else is pricing things in your community. So this is what it looks like if you put them both side by side and how much more their value of their dirt is versus here. And this is rental, and this is homeownership. So what's going on here? This is being passed through into their rents, and those folks are paying more taxes versus these folks here. That's just what's going on in the system. This is another model that we made for you where we just asked the computer, tell me where the dirt is worth more than the building on top of it. This is typically something that you use to find, like, where you might have a dead strip mall or a jiffy lube that's gone out of business. The building's not really worth anything. So you're actually losing taxes because of the cost of the street. But because you have so many old buildings, it's going to disproportionately show up in your old core. So we just ran the model because we could. Okay, so getting to the buildings, we always start with everybody's Walmart. It's kind of like everybody's got one. So your Walmart's like a million bucks. Going forward, you'll see, I'll keep the Walmart down here as a control subject. Or think of it as the barometer. Are you over or under a Walmart? Your residential's over a Walmart. Your single-family detached is coming in at about 1.8 million per acre. When you get into multifamily, you're at about 2.5. So multifamily is more productive than single-family. Oftentimes, people have biases. We actually did this work in Sugar Land, Texas, and their community, they literally told me that multifamily brings down the value of single-family. And I was like, where do you get that? When you look at the data, I mean, just look at some of these here. This is 15 million an acre right there, which is way more than single-family. So how can something that's actually more valuable at 15 million an acre bring down your value? That's its taxable value.
That's taxable value. And again, please poll questions to the end.
They probably paid more than that. So your multifamily is averaging 2.5 million. When you get into your townhouses, 3.5, 17, 54 million an acre. So that's, your townhouses are pulling about three times the value of single-family. And then this is, sorry, you're really doing great over here. 127 million an acre of value. So just the same information, this is just a bar chart showing them in comparison. And now going from single-family, just kind of comparing them. We just went ahead and grabbed three neighborhoods. This is the Heritage Neighborhood, Hunt Meadow Neighborhood, and Clay Street. And Clay Street has some public housing in it. And then this is just showing you what it looks like driving by, what it looks like from the air. So when you go from Heritage to this neighborhood, Hunt Meadow, you can start to see how it really stretches out and becomes lower density. But also, that's going to affect its value, right? And then here's Clay Street. So here's their colors on a map. You can see you're starting to get some reds here. There's also a lot of non-taxable or commercial property in here. But even with that, this is, Clay Street's pulling about 2 million an acre versus Hunt Meadow at 1.3 versus Heritage at 1.2. So again, we're not here to judge. This is just, this is the economic data of what these things produce. Your commercial now, going from residential to commercial, you can see, again, Walmart's at 1.1. Marshall's is a little bit above that. Sam's Club equals Walmart, and Lowe's is under Walmart. When you get into, your Giant Food is about Walmart. Safeway's about a little bit more than Walmart. Kohl's is more than Walmart. But then you get into your malls, 800,000, so this is less than Walmart. This one's about three times Walmart, and this is about five times a Walmart. Oftentimes, your commercial stuff, this is probably, and again, I don't live here, but this is most likely the old mall that was cannibalized by the new mall or the new malls. So you can only have so much mall fabric in your community. But when they start to sink, they sink real bad. By comparison, this retail right here is pulling 2.2 million an acre. So this is almost as productive as your good mall. And this one is definitely as productive as your good mall. And then this is 17 million an acre versus your Walmart at 1.1. And then when you get into your Main Street, I mean, the Dock Street Bar and Grill is just killing it. It's 63 million an acre right there. Again, like, people in Gilbert, Arizona would kill to have any one of these three buildings. You know, yet you have them here. The other thing about these buildings is let's think about your grandparents. So this building is 28 million an acre, and it's been sitting here since 1800. So 220 years, this has been producing a high level of taxes. Or these ones here at 26 million since 1704. This one here since 1680 at 5.6 million an acre. This is five times a Walmart's production, lasting a lot more than 15 years, right? So just for fun, we're like, okay, let's use the United States as a birthdate. We know when we got created as a country. And here's your man right there, William Paca. So we grabbed all of the buildings that predate the United States. Anything born before 1776, and you have some of those buildings here. I think it's about nine acres of buildings that predate the United States. So here's your Walmart. Here's your pre-America buildings. Here's the acres consumed. So about a fourth, 40% less land. It's producing three times the tax productivity or a total city taxes per acre of 31,000 an acre versus 10,000. We just, we couldn't resist. You have old buildings. Comparing a couple buildings, we compared the West Annapolis. This is its footprint. That's how big it is compared to your Safeway. So the Safeway's 10 million bucks. That's only 3.3 million. But look at how small that footprint is. So to make them equal, you need about 3.1 of the thing on the left to equal all of that. So if you're landlocked, if you only have so much earth, this is something to bear in mind, is how much earth do you want to blow through and what kind of revenue to gain? So you could do three of these buildings or one of those, and it's the same thing, right? Does that all make sense? That's kind of, we're just trying to show different ways of showing comparisons in your choices. Okay, so this is a joke that only works for some people. It's like, I've got, I work with some folks that are 20 years old. They have no idea what this is, the Brady Bunch. But we basically took your buildings and made it a Brady Bunch slide. So it's residential, low density, medium density, high density. Commercial, low, medium, and high. And mixed use, low, medium, and high. So we just basically did this as a grid, so you can see all of them on the same slide. Or you could see them like this. Same information. This is more graphic as a bar chart, so you can see the potency as you get to this end and these types of architecture. We just want you to see it all on one slide. Okay, so back to your buildings and where they are in your model. Here's the residential stuff in your model. It's sort of like a thick base. And then here's your Giant Foods. Is that little green thing down there? It's just not that productive. As you step up in your density, you step up in scale in your city. And then you've got your top producers up here in your model. So this is just all the charts that you saw earlier just kind of put on the model together, so you have that now, too. This is another breakdown that we do for cities. It's called planometrics. But basically, this is what you have to pay for impervious surface. All of this stuff here doesn't let water go into the ground, so you need to build a stormwater system because of buildings, parking, and roads. And if you could take your city and turn it into a chart, this is the area of your city, and that's how much land this stuff takes up. You can see the amount of parking that's out here, which is a tremendous amount of parking or out by the stadium. It's a lot of impervious surface, so it's moving a lot of stormwater, which becomes an expense for y'all. Your downtown has a lot of buildings in it and also surface, but it's not nearly as bad as out here. When you look at the value standpoint, however, this is one of the interesting things to look at. Parking is as much area as roads, right? So one-to-one relationship, but look at the value difference. One of the things that a lot of people don't realize is that when you start forcing parking everywhere, when you make me as a developer build parking out here, you're essentially giving me a discount because what the assessor is going to do is dial down the value, right? That value shouldn't be that low, but that's the way that our tax system works because the assessor goes out there and goes, well, it's not really worth anything. It's just a surface parking lot. But you all have built a road to that property and are paying for it. So that's a way that I get a discount. Another way of looking at that is this. This is your average per square foot per person. So you have a parking space, well, a little bit more, about a parking space and a half dedicated to every resident in this community. And you also have the same area of roads. When you look at it financially, however, this is the financial side of it. Or let me make it real for you, because you have to pay for the roads. So the roads are costing you $40 a square foot, and you're only collecting $15 a square foot of value on parking. Does that make sense? So because these two numbers don't match up, that's called a subsidy. You're losing about, what is that, 25 bucks a square foot in parking value?
Wow.
So the other thing is the how you grew. You had this massive growth spurt in 1950. This is your population. But this is kind of how it happened on the earth. So here's what your great-great-grandparents had from 1700 to 1800. That's the footprint that they took up. And then they doubled, actually a little bit more than double in land area, up until 1920. This is what their population density looked like. So they got really dense, up to about 13,000 people per square mile. Then they did a little annexation. You took a divot. You lost some people in World War II, but they came back with that extension of land. Okay, notice this. We're talking 100 years. We're talking another 100 years. We're talking 30 years, and then in one year, you did this, which is kind of crazy. That's a lot of land in one hit. And then you dropped your density down. You did a couple more annexations and brought your densities back up, but still not by You did a couple more annexations and brought your densities back up, but still not by much. So basically, if you look at the density of where you are right now, you're basically where you were in 1855. Y'all following me on that? So what happens is that's a tremendous amount of land to service and that's also coming due from an infrastructure standpoint. So just to make another chart on this, this is what was going on with your, with your population. And this is what's going on with your, with your land consumption. So if we use the break of 1950 right here, from 1950 to today, you grew your population three times, threefold. While at the same time, you're growing your land area tenfold. So a three times jump in population, a 10 times jump in land area. The more land you consume, the longer the roads get, the longer the pipes get, right? So these are your roads inside the system. And you can see how stretched out the roads are and you have a finer grain network in the old city versus the newer, particularly this area out here. So this is your roads per person or roads per square foot, per person. You peaked out at 38 feet of road per person when you suburbanized. You've actually brought your density up. You're still at about 16 feet of road per person, but your best was six feet of road per person. So when you build those roads, these are all the roads when they were built. We just kind of grouped them into buckets. So the roads that were built in 1910, those get rebuilt in 1970. So about 50 years or so, you're going to do a layer of, of millage or fix. But you, every 50 years, you do about a reconstruction. So this is the first wave of reconstruction. And then it gets rebuilt again for the second wave of reconstruction. And then you build it again in a third wave. And this goes on forever, as long as you, as long as you're above water level, I guess. But this is by 20, 2150, you can see how much more road surface area you're building versus what was built in 1930. Does that make sense? The more you start expanding, the more that comes due in the future. So you're sitting right about here right now. It's going to be pretty painful in 2030, but it's going to be super painful in 2070 when you have three layers of reconstruction going on. So just to make a joke of this, a road is forever. It's like a diamond. So back to your infrastructure, here's your utility bills going into those utilities and coming out. So we broke each of your utilities down and you can see they're all different lane miles or different miles of, of infrastructure. Think of this like a, like a wedding cake. It's different layers of infrastructure. So your roads are, sorry, your, your, your stormwater system, if you stick it end to end, you can get to Wilmington, Delaware. Your, your pipes go to Philadelphia. Your sewer goes to Trenton and your roads go to Bridgeport. So your job as a council is you have to fund that stuff over and over again. And I'm just gonna, is your finance officer in here?
No.
Okay. A little flaw in the financial system. And I'm actually working with the Government Finance Officers Association to change this. But right now, if you look at your budget, your roads and pipes are considered assets. Okay, when I sit down with finance officers or city managers, I'll say, okay, I've got this computer as an asset. My van is an asset. My office is an asset. I can sell my van, my building in this computer. Can Annapolis pick up its pipes and sell them to Baltimore? No, you're stuck with them forever. It's a liability. It's not an asset. So if you look at your asset ledger, that's actually giving you an indication of how much liability that you're in. In real estate world, when I build a building and have an air conditioner on the roof and I know that air conditioner is going to cost me $20,000 to fix it, I know that it's going to junk out 20 years from now. So I'll break that backward and put a reserve account to be able to have that $20,000 in 20 years, right? We should be doing the same thing with the roads. You should see a reserve account that it has the capacity to be the replacement. So if we're to do that with your, with your roads, this is what you're actually spending and this is what you should be spending in your system. This isn't 100% accurate and on the point, but it's close enough to give you an idea of what your deficit is. And you see this by maybe having potholes or a road's got cracks in it. It's giving you the signs. Roads don't collapse all at once. Roads kind of fail over time. Water infrastructure, however, does fail quickly. But you're looking at a little bit less of a deficit here. And again, this isn't, this isn't out of the ordinary with what we typically see in cities. It's just, there's a need for this. It's pretty bad in the sewer system. It's a very large deficit. And you probably know this, lift stations that need to be fixed, you know, things like that. Your stormwater is doing all right. You're neck and neck. And so this is just basically looking at all of them and the money that you should be putting in, in the deficit. Or to take this and stack it, here's what you put into those infrastructures and here's what you should be putting in. So your net deficit, we're estimating somewhere around $24 million annually in what those systems are underfunded. So that's just a reality of what's going on in the system. Looking at that on the map, here's your money coming, oops, coming out of the ground. And then we, we made a separate map of your costs and where they are geospatially. And let's take this and shove it down into the ground because it's all sunk costs and put your money on top of it. And then float it out in the bay. Imagine your city like a boat. This is the money coming out of the ground. And then this is the sunk costs under the water, right? So this is what folks are paying in taxes. This is what it costs for them to be there. Let's net one against the other. You can see the net position. If it's in the black or it's in the red, I'm going to go ahead and zoom into the model a little bit so it's easier to see. And then here it is in 3D. So about 23% of your city is covering the deficit of 77% of the city. And you can see where it's at. And again, this isn't to say that everybody's got to be in the black, but it's to say that you've got to make sure that you've got enough to eliminate this deficit of $20 million. And how do you grow more wealth? And it certainly isn't going to be by doing more red stuff. You know, you can't continue to dig the hole deeper. This is the bottom view of the model. If you're a worm looking up, you can see where it is. So we have this stuff for you so that you can share it. We can give you the whole map package so that y'all can add it to your GIS system. But this is basically the model that we're looking at. Now, one of the things that we did, just going back to that pre and post 1950 city, we just kind of scalped out the old city to see how it's running. And it's not 100% in the black either, but it's about 30% positive versus 69. And when you look at the post-World War II city, you're looking at a, at a bigger deficit of, sorry, 20% of float. So there is some, some stuff in the black in here. But putting them together, basically, this is producing, kicking out a net positive 1.4 million a year in your pre-1950 city, your post-1950 city is consuming 21 million of subsidy in the system. And again, I can't emphasize this enough. You're not alone in this. A lot of American cities metastasized like this and didn't really think through the long-term economic effects. Nobody priced out the modern city when we did this after World War I. And there were a lot of, I'll be honest with you, there was a lot of racial implications and class implications in doing that suburbanization. We commonly call white flight. There was redlining that we had in Asheville that, that precipitated a lot of this stuff too. So this is all spatial analysis. That's the whole model. Pardon the joke. This only works for over, people over the age of 20. So we just went ahead and just, just to grab pieces out to show you Heritage, Hunt Meadow, Eastport Shopping Center, West Annapolis Shopping Center, Hunt Meadow Townhouses, Annapolis Overlook, Nodles Point and Eastport Sale Loffs, where they are in their net position and where that break is between net positive and net negative, just as a sample in the model. Or to take these and kind of list them out, here's where they fall. And what's net positive and net negative. So you can even have commercial that's net negative if it's got big parking lots and not a whole lot of value in the building. So here's just a different way to, this is one last chart. This is just a different way of showing the same information, showing them as bar charts stacked under the images of their, their revenues in and their consumption out, and then what their net position is. Same information you just saw, just a different chart. Okay, this is a lot of heavy stuff to deal with. I know that I've thrown a lot at you. Probably want to know what I'd recommend. First thing is our practice, we call it geoaccounting. So we're going to just behave like an accountant. And when you talk to your accountant, your accountant doesn't care if you buy a boat, right? Your accountant cares if you can afford a boat. So my primary position is make sure you do choices that you can afford. Make sure that you're penciling this stuff out and be agnostic about it. Get past what you think is happening and see the data. So that's why we do these maps. Obviously, I'm going to recommend growing your purple mountains. Like this is the stuff that's already fertile, already showing you that it's got fruit. So find gaps. Find where there's something underperforming in those areas and maybe that's the spot to do infill. It's going to be little moves that are going to be tedious and it's going to involve a lot of conversation. But you can really, like, you're showing that you can kill it there because you already have it in your model. And that follows up with look for productive places and replicate them. So if you know something like this, this building here is crushing it at 17 million an acre, do another one somewhere. You know, let's find ways to facilitate that. Is it, is it illegal for me as a developer to come in and do that? If it is, then that's showing you that your zoning code's a problem. You know, remove the barriers to make the stuff that gives you wealth easier to do. And the stuff like, if I can go out and just drop a strip mall down, no problem, and the zoning code's going to let me do that. Why would you want that? Why would you want to lose that revenue opportunity by allowing me to underbuild in your community? Think of it as like having a two-drink minimum. You know, this is our best situation as shareholders here in Annapolis. And hey, Mr. or Ms. Developer, you better be over or under that. If you're under it, it better meet some of our community needs. It better be affordable housing or artist housing, whatever you want. Just whatever your choices are. But don't let somebody come in and underbuild and rob your wealth. So think of that, what you've got in your community, use these as barometers. So that's why we gave you this math, so you know those breakpoints. Also, you've got to have a conversation with your citizens about infrastructure is forever. I have this conversation with my parents all the time that these, these things don't fix themselves. You have to constantly own and maintain them forever. So you're at a deficit. You're not alone at this. This isn't that bad. I was showing, was it Gilbert? Was 66 million in deficit earlier today? So as you stretch out, it's real simple. As you stretch out, it gets expensive. So just be aware of that. And people may want that. You know, it's like, and people tell me all the time, well, hey, Joe, everybody wants that. It's like, yeah, great. I want to be six foot tall and have a full head of hair. I think you should pay for it. Like, what kind of nonsense is that? But we allow that in the public process. So this is, you've got a, this is, we made this chart specifically because this is your problem. That 1950s pattern stretched you out. And this isn't to say that the, the stuff in the early 2000s was any better out here. So just be aware of that. And that's reflected in your model. And just to close, like I said, you've got great examples. So what if you just, I just for the heck of it, I just photoshopped four pieces of your downtown, not your full downtown, just pieces of it out there. What if parts of your neighborhoods grew up to have some of the examples that you already know works? Neighborhood restaurants, neighborhood businesses, things like that, that were more fine-grained in your, in your neighborhoods out here. And that could be part of your comp plan to grow those areas up. Find ways to do, fix the zoning in those areas to facilitate it. In Eugene, Oregon, we just asked them to get rid of their impact fees in those areas. Like, why would you want to impact fee somebody that's actually bringing you long-term wealth? So just remove that. And I'll close with this. It's, we do a lot of work that gets covered in Strong Towns. And you can follow, you can follow that book or his blog and see a lot of what we, what we do around the country. And then also one other book is Good to Great by Jim Collins. And this is a book about maintaining a business. If you don't confront the brutal facts, they're going to confront you. The facts matter. So y'all are running a $9 billion corporation. We've given you a lot of math. And your challenge is to, to continue to confront your citizens with the facts that you have to deal with. And hopefully, some of these images help you do that. We try to make it easy to understand and thanks for all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mirkozi. I appreciate your time coming in. I am going to open this, the floor up for questions, but I'm going to ask two first myself, if my colleagues do not mind. So could you please go to the slide with the dirt is worth more than the building?
Thanks, sir. So in your opinion, does that mean that the buildings on this are underutilized, I suppose? Could there be a more efficient building put on top of them in these areas where the dirt is worth more? A more intensive use or a different type of use?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to depend based on where you're looking in the model. You know, if you, if you take a look at this neighborhood up here, this is telling me that there's a lot, there's a lot of people probably paying a lot for a lot in there. And the building just doesn't make sense because it's so small. In the case of the downtown, it's the replacement value of the building is just, it's a two-story building from 1820. You know, if I went out to rebuild that building, it'd be a million and a half to replace that building, maybe 2 million. But it sold for 20 million. So the assessor's like, there's no way that that building's worth all that much, the location's worth that much. So I wouldn't necessarily call that a, that's, that becomes a value statement. Is that a building you want to tear down on your historic Main Street? People would probably flip out if that were the case. Conversely, if you're out here on the commercial strip, some of those buildings, I don't think anybody would complain. It's just reached its useful life, like the dead Walmart example. But out here in the industrial area, you see a lot of that where the dirt is worth more. And some of that's just a factor of you're a tiny land area community by water and people will pay to be there. Which is what you'd see on the south side down here of this, this peninsula. So it's, this, this takes more ferreting out to understand.
A second question I have is can you please show the, what years the infrastructure comes due?
This one?
Yes. When can we expect to see, so is the orange, is that the, the orange portions of these bar charts, is that when we expect to see the 1951 annexation areas come due?
So when these were built here, let's see, that would be, one, two, three, four bars in, one, two, three. 2010, you were doing some of that and some, some of that's coming in. One of the things to notice here, here's your 1950s, but you actually, it took a while to thicken up. So more of the roads happened by 1970. So the 60s and 70s were your big hit, but you grabbed a lot of land in 1950. So you can go out and cast that net out into the farms, but it takes a while for the subdivisions to come in. Does that make sense?
Yes. So the majority of those roads then built post-annexations were built in the 70s?
Yeah, you're going to be, between now and 2030, you're going to be looking at it, this one, this one comes in, which is pretty big.
It's only six years from now.
Yeah.
I will just be turning 40. That's pretty soon, he says leadingly. And now I'm going to ask just a couple of questions, if you wouldn't mind. From your professional standpoint, are the following things, would these be financially beneficial or are they financially negative? Just looking at a, a number standpoint. Parking requirements, financially beneficial or financially negative?
Mostly economically disadvantaged, disadvantageous. They just don't, parking just doesn't produce a lack of a lot of, a lot of taxes. Also, think of this way. We have socially committed to paying for roads or car infrastructure as cars move. So why don't we do the same thing on the parking side? So we went to, what was the name, Fullstein? Some, was it Forward Brewery? Went to Forward Brewery yesterday to, to chat over, over dinner. And, you know, it's, there's a question of, why aren't you thinking of parking infrastructure in that neighborhood? If you're experiencing or you want to see revitalization or growth in that neighborhood? As opposed to just letting it happen on the streets or forcing the business owner to have parking? In Asheville's case, one of the, one of the beautiful things that the city did back in the day, think of it this way, when you had all of these buildings here, if I required this building owner to have parking requirements, that building owner would buy the building right next door and tear it down and build a surface parking lot. So what the city did in the 80s is they eliminated parking requirements in the downtown. But they also went front forward and had a parking strategy in the downtown. So all these business owners could buy parking passes. Now, what's nice about that, actually, our building that we renovated, this one here, everybody in this building, if they choose to have a car, they buy a parking pass and park in the parking garage behind. So the city gets revenue out of it. And when those people leave to go to work or go hiking or whatever, they resell that parking space when somebody else goes into it. So they actually see it as a capital account. So it's just something to think about is that we far too easily just say it should be a zoning requirement. And I would recommend getting rid of parking. be a zoning requirement, and I would recommend getting rid of parking standards and see what happens. It's not, it wasn't the end of the, it actually worked for Asheville. And it works for a lot of communities.
Thank you. So I have taken up a lot of time with questions, and several of my colleagues have some. Alderwoman Tierney?
No, I'm first, okay.
And then I saw Alderman Savage had his hand up, and any others in the order?
Mine are kind of random, not in priority. And the first one's actually a commentary, and it's not to, Park Place was mentioned, I think, at our last thing, you know? And living there, I thought, okay, it's condos. And they're like, okay, low end, maybe 380, high end, I'm not sure. There's some really, but what, I, I was in construction for years, and I dealt with architects. And I thought about it and thought about it, there's a perfect case of, there are good developers and there are bad developers. And this developer, Parks, what Parks, Jeremy Parks, right? Wonder if he's listening. But what he did was it's, it's the configuration of that building, and that's expensive. You know, he has, if you look at the shape of Park Place, it's kind of like an angular U-shaped. And consequently, there is not any wasted space in that hall, in that hallway, you know? And, and so consequently, he was able to get the density in there, but he chose that over, he chose that over spending, you know, debating, should he pay for, every time you make a turn in a wall and you have all of those ins and outs, it costs money, especially if you're dealing with a pre-casting glass building like that. So I was just curious, like, how that, you know, comparing it to like Watergate, I mean, I don't know, it's, I don't think it's so much of a cost differential as far as the units, but I think it's getting those units in there and laying it out and working with the architect and being a really good developer. I was just, I really think that's a big part of it. Second thing, is that the Flatiron Building, the one before in Asheville?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
It's right next door to the Flatiron Building.
Okay, that's right. I've gone there, we're going there, and we're going there in a couple of weeks. But that, isn't that the Flatiron?
The Flatiron's right here on the side, right across the street. This is...
Because they're still working on the Flatiron Building.
This, this is an old department store.
Okay, yeah.
You know, additionally, this building here, the old Asheville Hotel, those are 400, we had to do the same thing as developers, that you lose money when you have huge hallways and turns.
Wasted space, yeah.
It's wasted space. But also, the reason why, the reason why this building is so productive, you know, think about it, it's gone from department stores, so how many bathrooms are on each level, if that, from a 1920s building? Oftentimes, you define like one, one level that has the bathrooms in it and nothing else. What's expensive in a building? Your bathroom and your kitchen. So when you convert from office to residential, you're actually gaining a tremendous amount of value inside the building, because there's going to be four condos a floor that each have their own bathrooms and kitchens and expensive stuff. So the value actually goes up going from office to residential, because there's just more valuable stuff in there.
So what, just like four questions here. Dock Street, I don't know what slide it was, what's going on there? Because it's, it's, Eric, what's going on with Dock Street? It's a pub, it's a restaurant at the bottom, but I don't think there's anything going on in the second and third floors. I was just curious, you know, like, what's driving the revenue there at Dock Street?
To be fair, I think that the other properties adjacent to it might be of the same value per acre, but that was, we just picked that one out of the bunch. But I think Storm Brothers might be in the same category.
It could be, what's upstairs in this building?
That's what I mean. I don't think there's any...
Is it residential?
Maybe. Probably apartments.
No?
I was just really curious about that.
It could be, it could be what they paid for it, it could be if they did renovations recently.
Okay.
But again, it's, we're not making those numbers up, we're just taking the value and just dividing it into the acres.
Yeah, I was just trying to rationalize, because, you know, whether it was mixed use in there or whatever. By concern, I wish the finance director was here, because you definitely showed about the, the exposure we have with the sewer and the storm and the water. And in my understanding, you know, we have a consultant that evaluates that and presents to us. And the objective there is to, you know, they're enterprise funds, so the revenue coming in should support the expense. But in your presentation, you definitely made it sound like we have an overrun. And that brings up the question, how much of a burden does the consumer, i.e. the resident, have to bear in these situations? And you could ask the same question with parking. You, you showed a slide where there definitely was, you know, almost, you know, we were subsidizing, which surprised me, I know we're subsidizing transportation, but I had never heard that we were subsidizing parking. But the answer to that then would, oh, well, we raised parking fees. Again, the burden goes to the consumer, i.e. the resident. So what's, what's the answer to that?
Well, here's, here's the thing, though.
Unless I don't understand what you were saying.
No, there's, let's go back to that chart. So we can walk around this building a block in any direction, you're going to be charging for parking on the street, right?
Yeah.
Do you charge in the neighborhoods?
We do now. Well, it's experiment.
In our downtown areas and others, we do not.
So why can I park in my neighborhood for free, yet I can't in the downtown? So that's a subsidy, right? You're letting people in the neighborhoods not pay to park on public infrastructure. That's a choice that you've made, right?
So hypothetically, then, not hypothetically, but the answer would be then implement Park Mobile, a revenue, you know, or equivalent to residential neighborhoods?
Well, no, it's just, just realize these are choices, and realize that you're choosing subsidies, right?
But what's your end game there?
It's not an end game, I want you to do math.
You just want to, you want to be smart about it.
Write it down.
Yeah.
And say, look, what is it? So in the case of, in Lancaster, California, we measured just the cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
The cul-de-sacs are at a deficit of $2 million a year. And I said to Lancaster, California, I'll say to you all, like, I don't live here, right? This is your community, you have to weigh the political consequences of this. But you have to be honest with the citizens and let them know the cost and consequences.
Yeah.
So when people say, like, in Lancaster, we like our cul-de-sacs. I was like, great, I don't care. It's a publicly funded driveway, right?
Yeah.
It's not a transportation system. There's seven people at the end of a cul-de-sac that get to use that. Y'all don't go out and drive around those cul-de-sacs, that's not part of the transportation network, why is it a public street? What's that?
So...
So, so it was $2 million a year is the subsidy. So as long as you bring that to council and you vote, we are spending $2 million a year on these 55 people, and that's what we decide as a community, we don't have that $2 million a year for an after-school program. We don't have that $2 million a year for an art program. We don't have that $2 million a year for a mural. You look at all of your stuff on your, that you have to weigh, and just say, is this the best use of our public dollars?
Change the things that you can change, but in Annapolis, what, we have a lot of existing aging infrastructure that we don't have any choice in. So when you say make good choices, what can we do other than having the resident, again, carry the burden of paying for the stormwater and sewer? We, you know, we're not expanding the system, do you know what I'm saying? That, that gives, we're not growing our infrastructure. We don't have, we have limited opportunity to grow our infrastructure.
I want to just change that, what you just said, for a second here. That was, I don't, I don't mean this, with all due respect, I don't mean this, sort of with, with the intensity that this is going to come out.
That's okay. I don't even know if you sound like my ex-husband.
Well, no, no, but the thing is, is like, you're not putting anything on the backs of the residents if I look at this. If anything, the black properties are carrying the stuff in red, which happens to be mostly residential. Your residents aren't carrying their own load uniformly. Some residents that are in black are. Does that make sense? So it's not, that's, it's not an equilateral statement, it's, it's based on geography and consumption. So there are, like, your condo is a disproportionate producer based on your, your load, and you're sacrificing. You have less space in your personal space, you don't have a big backyard for your dog to run around. You don't have those things, and as a trade-off, you're paying more. Or another way of looking at this is, our tax system is designed to give us rewards to waste infrastructure. And that's, as long as we acknowledge that, is that what we want?
Yeah.
Is that the best use of public services?
So this is really good, this is, in the graphs, the, the graphs are, the charts are good. I mean, they, they show it very well. Which brings me to my last question or comment is, when you talk about subsidizing, the city subsidizing the county, I think what you said. I look in the budget, and we have this thing called fee in lieu of, right? And, and I'm just saying, this is good, this is good data to have when we argue, you know, our new lobbyist argues, our new lobbyist argues to the state, hey, we need some more money because we give you this, right? We usually, what we do is, well, this is how many, this is our police, this is our fire, and this is our, you know, and we're getting, did I mention fee in lieu of taxes? 200, $268,900 for fiscal year 2025 from, you know, from, from the state. And I don't know if I'm talking apples to oranges, I'm just saying, when you look at what, what the chart showed there as far as what we give the state as far as revenue, yeah, it should just be considered, you know? I know it's for services, but it's like, hey, we, we give you a lot of revenue, and I, I think it's some data that is beneficial to us to have when we lobby for that money. Anyway, so, you know, this is all good stuff, I just, it's, it's knowledge for the consumer or the resident. They have, you know, and I say that to them. I'm like, look, we live in a city, we have limited opportunity to grow, we have to be smart about our decisions, we have aging infrastructure, this is why, you know, your sewer fee went up. But, but even with that, we're hearing it's still in trouble. Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Savage, and then Alderwoman Finn Lason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great information, thank you so much. And on that last point, would you be able to give us that data, pull it out of your model, as far as if you look at just the state and the federal lands, how much value is underneath them, so to speak, as far as public assets? And I guess in particular, sewer, stormwater?
Yeah, we, we actually, I don't know if the county shared this with you, but we actually did a separate study with them. See if I've got it here. So you're a $9 billion, a $9 billion city, the county's worth $104 billion. When you, when you look at your tax rolls, you can pull a church, you can pull this building in the property card, this building actually has a value that your county assessor puts on it. It's kind of an okay guess. They're going to like, what's the, what's the, what would this sell for as an office building? They, they kind of throw a number on it. We, we take it with like, a little bit of grain of assault on that, because they don't really put the full value into it. They kind of know that it's going to get exempted out, but they're still going to put a value down. That shows you where they're coming from. We'll usually go in and kind of tweak it a little bit, find out what you have in the area, and, and adjust it. If, if they're paying $1 million a condo across the street, and this were turned into a condominium, you know, things like that. But you're essentially sitting on $4 billion of, of opportunity in those, like, let's say a school that's in your, in your city, where the parking lot could have teacher housing in the parking lot? You know, does it really need to just be surface parking out at the school? There's opportunities to turn that into a public wealth fund, where you're actually using your public land to build community services. So we did this analysis with the Government Finance Officers Association across a series of cities. And that's what you have in your city, is about 4 billion. County-wide, you're looking at about 10 billion of opportunity. To compare that against Chattanooga, Chattanooga's a $21 billion city with 10 billion worth of assets. But it's called public, public wealth funds, is, is what the terminology of that analysis is. But yeah, you should start to have the conversation with your school board, some city properties, is it the best use as a surface parking lot for a city parcel of land? Or could you start to do a co-development? You actually kind of did one, sort of with your parking deck, immediately behind. I would argue that you could have done a little bit more with that than just a parking garage, but, you know, it's, it's better than nothing. But you get revenue out of this stuff. This isn't to say just sell it off to developers, I wouldn't recommend that, unless it's totally wasted real estate. But you should have the same conversation with the, with, with the Naval Academy, like that, that football stadium and all of that land around it, is that the best, highest and best use for that property? It's not to say get rid of the parking lots, but surely you can do more out there. I know that that's going to, it's probably, it's probably fighting words in your community. But it's, actually, the federal government, the GSA, actually has a manual to encourage that stuff. So if the feds are talking about it, let's get the Navy involved. Anyway, it's easy for me to say that.
And just to comment, respond to my colleague from Ward 1, you were talking about putting some of the cost to residents, right? Well, they're, they're, they're paying one way or another, right? Either through the fees or the taxes. For a lot of our assets, we choose the fee because it's based on actual consumption, right? So I think that's more, certainly more equitable, except when it comes to roads that are not downtown, well, yeah, I guess anywhere for the most part, except unless there are roads downtown where they have street parking. Otherwise, that's a free asset, to his point. No tolls, we have no fees on car use, car usage or car ownership, unless you're downtown, So, because that's something I mull into my head, is in the future, I feel like we need to go towards, frankly, have parking districts all over it, so that we can prevent people from having too many cars and, essentially, because that, that also has a burden, is a burden on our resources, our assets. And thanks, I had no idea that we had a homestead, the assessment cap, whatever it's called, 10%. I just looked it up in our code, sure enough, there it is. I'd never, never knew that. We might want to consider removing that. It's the state? Well, I would have to look that up, because that's, it's in our code, I'm curious what the state, because Salisbury had 0% listed.
So this is, this is Florida's. And the thing is, Florida did it in their state constitution. And I'm just going to go ahead and out this, I know that this is on tape. I was, I was living in Florida and voted for this in 1992. I didn't own a house, I was a recent graduate, and I'm like, yeah, tax cap, that sounds cool. And I voted for it. So flash forward, here I am, I'm 56 years old, making fun of it. So anyway, they restricted residential to 3% or CPI, which is ever lower of the two, and commercials at 10%. So this is what happens when the market takes off before the recession. So this is, this is the market, and this is where you're capped at from a tax standpoint. Isn't that awesome? You're taxing yourself less. Well, guess what happens when you hit the recession and it climbs back out? The market takes off again, and because of your restriction in growth, you can't grow beyond that ceiling. So let me ask you a question. Is the price of concrete following the red line or the blue line? It's following the blue line. So they've capped themselves in 2022, they were capped at 3%, even though inflation was at 7%. So ironically, you can't afford your government. You know, you can't buy pencils, pencils are following the blue line, you know? And so here's, I mentioned the asphalt. Here's their tax cap at 7%, but they can't do that because they're capped at 3. Here's the price, asphalt, just in the state of Florida is growing at 5% per year, and just in one year of, was it 2021, asphalt grew by 30%. There's a great colonial barb that we used to all say as colonists, don't tax me, don't tax thee, tax the fellow behind the tree. Like, seriously, we used to say that. We're tax evaders as a country. We threw tea in the, in the bay because we wanted, we didn't want to tax the way that British were doing it. So it's very common for Americans to push back in not wanting to pay for things. You're going to get that with all of this. It's just human. So you have to give them the information to be aware of the financial constrictions that you were in. By the way, while y'all were talking, you actually have some great information in here that I, okay, so here's, here's your millage rate for the state and your millage rate for Annapolis, right? So I know that y'all are producing $59 million in property taxes under that millage rate. So I just went back and reversed the millage rate of the, of the state dollars, or the state millage rate. or the state millage rate. So basically, here's the position you guys have. You're kicking out $59 million in property taxes to yourself, but your community is producing 8.9 million dollars in property taxes to the state. What was it you said that the state gives you back?
Revenue. I think on the graph, intergovernmental revenue, it says 17. I think that's a combined maybe.
Yeah, but that's, that's combined. That's something the county.
Yeah.
But you're, you, you give 8.9 million to the state and you only get how much hundred thousand back? That's your leverage.
Yeah.
If the state will listen to you. I know that that's kind of a.
Make a note about that.
It's, it's 8.9, or 8, 8, 8 million, 953,929 dollars according to that millage rate in your, your value production.
So, all right, so a couple other things. Uh, let's see. So I guess you were talking about value going up from office when things shift from office to residential. For example, downtown, but I'm guessing, maybe that's, I'm not sure if it's the right question for you or not, but I'm curious how other jurisdictions have made that shift to get more, I guess, essentially mixed use, right? It's going from dedicated office to more dedicated commercial to that mixed use. Cause I don't know how many, I'm sure we've done studies about how many properties downtown a second, third story that are actually being used for residential, right? Yeah.
So do you do anything to make it difficult? You know, that's the thing is like, in a lot of cities, they might have zoning restrictions that don't allow change of use. I don't know what your zoning requirements are, but it's, you make barriers that make it difficult for me to rehab a building and to do that. Sometimes, uh, like fire codes get in the way. But I don't, I don't know your zoning requirements. This is, think of this as a first pass, like here's what's going on. And then that next, going to those questions of is our zoning code in the way? Is the building code in the way? Is it just a habit that we have on city staff to be resistant toward residential downtown? Asking questions about if you're forcing people to pay for parking downtown, it seems fair that everybody should have to pay for on-street parking, either through a permit or some kind of thing. Or if you're giving people that break, let them be aware of this is the, whatever, how many thousands or millions of dollars we're giving away to you is this free service. You know, it seems only fair.
Another observation, it was really interesting to see, I don't think I've quite understood the implications of it, but the map that shows the parking throughout the city and a credible map of it was out in Ward Three, out in parole. And presumably, I think most of those are probably private parking and that's some of our, that's kind of our industrial area. Which, of course, finally have probably the fused trees. So yeah, so and that's, it's just interesting that for the whole city, that area has the most. And I guess I'm curious to dig in a little more as far as the, the implications of that.
Well, you're gonna get, that's gonna be your stormwater problem.
Yeah.
Right? That, that stuff has to, so here's the quick question. Check the cost of the stormwater of all of this against the stormwater fees that it pays. Is that equal? Or is it, is it that plus the taxes covering the cost of it? Can I, just, I want to show you something. This is a little bit of schadenfreude, but it's like making fun of other people. Well, I was in, I was in Springfield, Missouri. And, um, I'm not making this up. One of the, while we were doing the analysis, somebody from the engineering department, I had made a comment that they didn't have street trees. And it just, you know, I was like, why don't you have street trees? It's kind of weird to go through a whole city without street trees. And the engineer honestly shot back to me, raises his hand. And somebody in the engineering department said to me, he goes, well, that's because they attack the streets and the sidewalks. And I couldn't resist. I couldn't hold myself back. I said, attack? Like, do you know how to build a tree pit? And then I stopped. I didn't want to embarrass him. It just was so offensive. So I went back to the staff and we actually made a big joke out of it. We're like, okay, so trees attack. The, uh, there's like Freddy Krueger comes out and like attacks the, the streets. So here's their stormwater position. So you're actually in a better position than they are. They're at this deficit. But their system costs 600 million dollars. So what you're about to see, I actually went back and presented what you're seeing right now to their staff. And I said, so that's the deal. This is your stormwater system. So here's why you have it. Is all this impervious surface right here? So this is your impervious surface at the same scale as your city. You have a lot of impervious surface. And this is how much water it's moving. So your pipes are shoveling out 14 billion gallons of water. So let's consider a tree for a second because trees are just big pipes. They're like two sponges on a pipe stick, right? It's sucking up water out of the sky and sucking up water out of the ground. So your trees do, a tree does this in Springfield, Missouri. Because we had their, their, um, computer data, we estimated they had about, um, that many trees sucking away about a million gallons of, of water out of the trees. But this is what it's intercepting is a pipe. That translates into 2.2 million dollars of savings to their community. So you didn't have to pay for 2.2 million dollars more stormwater because of the trees that you currently have. So here's an idea. Go out and buy some more damn trees. Now, I understand they cost more money. I get it. So let's do some math on that. A tree is going to cost you in its life cycle, 75 bucks for planting it and maintenance annually. And this is your annual stormwater benefit from that tree. So you're in a net positive position of 40 bucks. If you planted 10,000 trees, you could actually harvest enough money to buy four police officers. Why not? Like you can actually use trees to your benefit. Now here's the kicker. Here's the kicker. This is Springfield. They're 170,000 people. So we had all of this other data. So I put this out there. This is Eugene, Oregon. I'm like, look at this. Eugene somehow is smaller than you with 5,000 more people. How the hell did they do that? So let's kind of look at their stats for a second because they have stormwater, right? So they've used less land per person. And, you know, Springfield's in the Midwest. They like to stretch out in the Midwest. Great. When you stretch out, you make more buildings and more road area plus more parking. They have three parking spaces per person versus them. Now, remember I said y'all are about 1.1 in parking per person. So you're actually doing better than Eugene. But check out their stormwater system. I said to them when I presented in Springfield, I'm like, look at this, folks. This is 120 million, 180 million dollars less in stormwater than what they spent. If you could turn back time and sit before the city council in 1950 and say, what's the best way to blow 180 million dollars? Would you choose to stretch out and build a stormwater system? Or would you choose to send every child to Johns Hopkins for summer camp? Like, what would you do with 180 million dollars? And they made a choice. And so here's, here they are suffering with it, the cost and consequences of buying all that infrastructure. Or you could plant more trees. Oh, by the way, we did the math. If they did plant that 180 million dollars worth of trees, they would net 96 million dollars a year in their revenue rather than stretch out that infrastructure. And the 98, 96 million dollars a year is double their ARPA funds that they got from the feds last year. Imagine having double your ARPA every year in perpetuity because of trees.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's, it's good timing on that because we actually just tied our, with the last budget, tied our tree program, urban tree program to our waters, our stormwater fee, stormwater fund.
Oh, good.
And so that's funding the entire program now. But this even makes it clearer, I think, that, that really makes sense. If I could just wrap up, I just, um, so so I think that cost breaker slide was very helpful to see. And, um, you know, I, I think it really shows us what kind of land use costs more to us as a city. It really feels one of the most important slides. And I thought it was interesting, like looking at Ward Seven is my ward out where the giant shopping center is that you had up there a couple times. Looks like that costs us more. But even new development right across the street, Starbucks, CVS, cost us more. And, and that, I think, was kind of interesting because it's brand new development. Both have a drive-through, that cost us more money. Like, it seems like we should not be doing that with new, especially new commercial. I could maybe see that to a certain degree, the residential, but new commercial, it just doesn't seem like good practice. I mean, that was, and it's interesting, like the new, the new senior development right behind there, Bay Village, that's making us money. The senior, which is what everybody complained about was the housing, right? But.
Senior housing tends to be more dense. It tends to have less parking because they drive less. But yeah, I think like having, but again, making these your choices. If that Starbucks comes in and produces less, were you lacking coffee or something? Like, is it, is it really a community need? If it is, good, go for it. Otherwise, look at your fee system so that you're not subsidizing it. You know, that, that, do you have, like, do you have a stormwater fee? Do you have a road fee? It's a utility.
Yeah, no.
You know, so you could just, you can equally break this, this model down to have those layers that way. You could do things by district where you have different district fees based on the infrastructure investment there so that you're aware of where the subsidies are and make that choice based. If it's affordable work, if it's affordable housing, if it's things that your community needs, you can make that benefit happen.
But that's my last point related since you, you mentioned that the community benefit is how does this, does this data capture some of that? For example, the, the park, obviously the parkland is going to have low value presumably. I can't remember as far as, uh, we're Truxton Park on there. Have low land va, like low value as far as revenue, but there's a community value. So how do you, is there a way to capture some of that, the, the non-tax values?
There, there is. It's going to be more squishy. There, there is actually a great book called Happy City. I don't like the name, but the book is actually a, a really good diagnostic about social benefits. Canadians actually measure this stuff because Canadians have a, a, a socialized healthcare system. So they spend a lot of time measuring, um, you know, serotonin levels when people see each other on the street kind of thing. Americans, we don't have good data that way. My usual response when people say stuff like that is, how do I measure it? You know, I was in, I was in Santa Rosa, California and one of the community members said to me, he goes, come on, man, like, we're not like ripacious developers. I guess because I was wearing a tie or something. He's like, you know, we're Californians, we're more laid back. We care about each other. And he, like, the guy, it was like I was at Central Casting. He was wearing a beret. I'm like, I'm not making this up. And I just joked back at him. I'm like, well, how do we measure your soul versus my soul? Like, I, I'm on five different nonprofit boards. I've actually challenged my city about not funding reparations. I give 20% of my revenue a year to different charities. I consider myself an average citizen. Are you doing more for your city or less for your city than me? Cause that's how I'm going to measure you. And his face just went blank. And I was like, do you see how weird this gets when we start talking this way? It's like, I, I don't want to take information that's ephemeral about what your quality of life is. If I can't, if we're not starting with this, let's start here and then we'll get to that stuff. But we have to balance the books first before we get to the, what does a park do for you? I'm not, I'm not against parks, by the way. It's like every community should have access to it. And a map should be that every child should be allowed to walk to a park. Any child under the age of eight should be allowed to walk to a park within five minutes. You know, and if an eight-year-old can do it, an 80-year-old can do it. If you can make your city safe enough for an eight-year-old, you're doing good things.
All right. In order of hands that I've seen, it's going to be Alderwoman Finn Lason, then Alderwoman Pendell-Charles, and then Alderman Gay, and then I think we've had a fantastic work session.
Great, thank you. Um, just a couple of historical significances. We do have a tax cap, 3.5%, whichever is less. And a number of years ago, probably coming up on 20 years ago, we had a big effort to change that to whatever is greater and it still failed.
Yeah.
So that's on us as the, the voters. We tried to build a parking structure on Compromise Street behind Annapolis Elementary School when they were renovating. And the plan was, and a beautiful plan, to put a parking structure underneath and a playground on top. And the city council actually took a position in support of that. But the mayor did not agree and he worked with the Board of Ed, the superintendent, and it failed at the Board of Ed level. So we're constantly competing with other interests, I'll say. So my question is, all of your diagrams show tremendous height. And you know, we have a height restriction in the city. So how do you sell the height component, especially in a smaller area as we are? And particularly in the area that you're looking at, which is downtown?
Well, first of all, I wouldn't say height. So let's kind of learn from yourself. This is 63 million dollars an acre. It's three stories. This is showing up like a really big spike in your model. The big building that she lives in is only twice this value. And it's, what, almost three times the, the height of this? So you don't have to be a tall building to be potent. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So can you do this building or maybe a cluster of them is like a neighborhood node somewhere? You're going to get tremendous value out of that with little buildings. But I can, I can guarantee you, this is probably illegal to rebuild this Doc Street building in most of your neighborhoods. You know, people are like, where's the traffic count? I'm like, oh, did they do a traffic count in 1720 when this thing was built? You know, how thick was their zoning code when this was built? So we've created all of these rules that actually make that impossible to do. But this, I wouldn't, you know, I would be the last person to say, go off into a neighborhood and build an eight-story building or go into downtown and, and do that, you know? So it's just, you will get resistance on that stuff. But this, this thing, do you have a minimum lot size that would make this illegal? Is it, is it a zoning code requirement? There's going to be lots of things to untangle. Where, view the, view the model as like a CAT scan to which you're going to do surgery. When you go and do surgery, you don't just carve your body open and just kind of have at it. They have a plan to go after your kidney or your shoulder and not your heart, you know? So these little buildings can kill it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, it does.
Yeah. And, and that's a, it's actually a common reaction where people are just like, you want to see big buildings everywhere? It's like, no, you know, it's like, that's 63 million an acre. Let's kind of see where that would show up on the model. So 63 million an acre is going to show up more than this building in potency. So it's a, it's one of these purple spikes in here. So people construe these purple spikes as skyscrapers, but this is a four-story building coming in a purple. This is a one, two, three, four, five, six-story building coming in. So a six-story building is actually less productive than a four-story building. So yeah, it's just, it doesn't have to be tall.
Thank you.
Alderman Pendell-Charles, then Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, to Alderman Savage's point, and Mr. Leschinsky can verify this. When I looked at my Ward Three profile, tree canopy and the, those necessities were missing. So I have added them to my profile. Is that correct, Mr. Leschinsky? Absolutely.
That is correct.
Yes, I have because I have listened to you. And I, the more I read, the more I realized that tree canopy is the most beneficial and the least expensive. And it's something that we definitely can do, even if it's somebody who wants to buy a tree and we have a little contest or whatever, um, as far as, uh, tree purchases and that sort of thing. So yes, I definitely want that in my Ward Three profile. Mr. Joe, a question you've done and looked at and assessed a lot of different cities and towns. What is the most, what is the most closely representative of Annapolis that you've done so far? And that you could maybe give us some direction on what you indicated to that city or town?
Like your grandma. Like your grandma, who would be grandma? You know, you're a lot like Charleston. Charleston was a much, is a, was a much more robust downtown in its day, but very similar colonial pattern of development, very similar growth pattern. I'll say that Charleston did it for race reasons. They, they expanded because they wanted to keep their white population. And as you got white flight, they just started chasing the white people to maintain a white majority in their community. Even though the, the, the old town of, of Charleston, known as the Peninsula, in the 50s, 60s, and 70s was majority black. Their pop, somehow their votes were still majority white, which is a very southern way of, the way that they handled that. But you're gonna find similar patterns of that same convulsion. They did it because of white flight. You maybe did it because of that, but also probably because of where you were located to the capital and that, your military history, what was going on around here. So that's gonna make you a little different. They still have Navy Yard stuff down there the way that you have Navy, but not at the scale that you have Navy. You know, you function a little bit like a college town. You have a little bit of Chapel Hill in you. Based on the, the, the outsized scale of, of the Navy to you all, is like a really big college, if you will. So I don't know. Nothing's like perfectly like you, but you kind of rhyme like a lot of, like Charleston and Chapel Hill. What makes you different is also because of, you're in Maryland, so you have a lot more state influence than most states. It's very rare to see a state property tax. Minnesota has one, but we don't. In North Carolina, we pay income tax. I don't, does that help?
Yes. We've been to Charleston, and we went on the white tour and the black tour. Now that was interesting.
Yeah.
Very.
I mean, there's, if, if y'all indulge me, I think one of the things that might be a next step is, is looking at your assessment model. Can I show you something? You mind?
Please.
Okay.
Show us things. This is the purpose of the meeting.
Okay. Okay. As a, as a citizen of Asheville, in 2020, my city and my county adopted reparations, and we're the first ones in the state to, or the country to do this. I live in Asheville. I've lived in Asheville for 20 years. I knew that this didn't mean a whole hill of beans. And so I walked into my office one day, and I said to my staff, "There's a reassessment going on. We're gonna challenge it. Let's take a look at it." Asheville is a fif, you know, I don't know if y'all know, redlining happened. 1934 is part of the New Deal program. The federal government changed mortgages from seven-year mortgages to 30-year mortgages. A 30-year mortgage did not exist before 1930. And they did that to try to get more people into homeownership, but only of a certain class. So what they, what the federal government did is, we're changing mortgages, but we need you all in your communities to make a map. That map has to be graded in four colors. Green is good. Blue is okay. It's called still desirable. Yellow was considered declining. Red was considered hazardous. In the measurement for hazardous, and these are their terms under the federal, federal government, your infiltration of immigrants or your negro population. So if you wake up one day and this map is adopted, if you're in a redlined neighborhood, your mortgage is not secured. So you have to go to a predatory lending institution. The immigrant classes that were coming in the 1930s were Italians, so watch out for me. I could take down your value. Yeah, it's, it's, I'll, I'll break your leg or something. But, um, but the thing is, I can change my name to Smith, right? I can, I could, I could change my ethnicity by changing my name because I'm white. A black person doesn't have that opportunity. So that perniciousness stayed in the system until 1968, when it was deemed unconstitutional. So you see this lag in a lot of neighborhoods where they're seen as low-income neighborhoods is because they were trapped in that for, for 50 years. So our question as a team was, is this still going on inside our assessment system? So this is a map of my county. If you're white, you're blue. It's Appalachia. We're 80-something percent white. And if you're, if you're black, it's green. This is my city limits. My city bends around this thing called the Biltmore Estate. And what a lot of people don't realize, in the Biltmore Estate, is this big subdivision is attached to it called Biltmore Forest. This is the richest neighborhood in the state. And this is a neighborhood called Shiloh across the street. It's part of the city. My friend Reggie lives in Shiloh, and Sidney Powell lived in Biltmore Forest at the time, so we went ahead and grabbed her house, which is kind of cool. She's since moved to Texas. Yeah. So here's Reggie. Here's Sidney. And when you look at Sidney's house, there's nothing to write home about. It's just a ranch house, right? So when you look at the land value per acre, this checks out, right? Her dirt is worth more than Reggie's dirt. When you look at the buildings, however, the building value per square foot, this is what you see. So I sat down with my assessor. His name is Keith Miller. And I was like, "Keith, I'm trained as an architect. Can you explain to me how Reggie's house is worth more per square foot?" And now here's his response. He goes, "Well, you know, she's got more square footage." And I'm like, "Oh, it's like toilet paper? The more I get, the cheaper it gets?" I'm like, "Come on now. She's got four bathrooms. Reggie's got one." So he's paying more taxes per acre. That's not fair. And then from last assessment to this assessment, how is his house double the desirability of her house? And on her property card, she's renovated and he hasn't. So how is this happening in the system and why isn't anybody looking at it? So at the same time we were doing this analysis, a report came out from University of Chicago that the New York Times picked up, where they found that expensive properties were undervalued and less expensive houses were overvalued. And they released a bunch of maps and these things. I call them a J curve. It's like, this is the bottom 10% of housing. This is the top 10% of housing. Taxes should be uniform. There should be a straight line across the model. Why is this bent? So here's what's going on in the system. This is my county. This is a house where it was assessed at 192, 191,000. It's sold for 150. So that's an over-assessment, where they're assessing it higher than what it actually sold for, right? So that's paying 27% more for its government than they should be paying. This is a house where they got it right, or close to right. So assessed it at 350, sold it at 350. That's a one. And then here's a house. This is, this is assessed value. This is what it's sold for. So they're paying about 50% of the taxes they should be paying. So we went ahead and analyzed our whole government. This is all of our county, taking all of the houses, breaking them from the poorest folks to the richest folks, going to 10% buckets. It should be equal. They should be, the average of each of these deciles, each of these 10% should be equal. And here's what my county looks like. So the, the bottom 30%, 40% of housing is overpaying a million bucks. In the top 60% are underpaying 6 million. So I turned to my county commissioners and I said, "The first rule of reparations is do no harm. That's harm. And if you're looking for a reparations fund, there's a number for you. $7 million a year is what we should be putting into account to work with people." I'm crossing a third plane here. I'm now speaking to you as a citizen of my community, not as a consultant. My county thanked me by hitting my consulting company with a tax penalty. I'm not making this up. I paid the $600 and was like, "All right. I'm gonna show you the law." This is what the state law says. "A true value shall be the price in which a property will change hands between a willing buyer and seller." So here's a house in the south side. This is a predominantly black neighborhood. Here's what it was assessed at by the computer. Here's what it sold for. So we've got the computer assessment, the sale price, and the human reassessment. So be it not for this sale, this, this person is overpaying 16% for their government, right? Now, the, the assessor brought it to a fair price. That's cool, right? Okay, so that checks out with the law. Here's another one, and you can see the computer underassessed it, and they brought it up to 100. That's cool. Okay, let's go to rich people. Let's change the scale. Here's what it sold for, and here's what it was assessed at. So I sat down with the assessor, and I said, "You need to walk me through this. If my kid brought home a, if my kid brought home a test score of 50 on a test, I wanna know what happened. Could you tell me which knob to turn to fix this?" But here's why I don't trust you. With the test score right there, here's what you reassessed it at. Now, y'all saw the law. Can you explain this to me? Here's another one. If you think I'm cherry picking, you might see a pattern here. The moral courage to bring it up one whole percentage point, boy, that's a public service right there. It's a joke. So this, this person on the far left is paying full freight. How many of that person and their neighbors are covering the subsidy of one person on the mountain? And, and it's basically five houses. So that's what's going on. Hang on, we're getting there. So I showed this to our assessor, and here's the thing. We're sort of super-users of Esri software, which is what every assessor has, including your assessor. And we said, "Look, just, just ask the computer a question. Like, here's a question. Show me the land value change in one year. This shows you that that's an anomaly, right? Go and fix that property. Don't leave it to the citizen to try to figure out government. Do good government." But hang on, zooming into my neighborhood, check this out. I showed this to the assessor. Downtown is right here. I live in a 1920s, uh, streetcar suburb of downtown. Look at this right there. I showed this to my assessor. I'm like, "What's going on where this part of my neighborhood just jumps up?" And his response to me was, "Well, that's a different tax neighborhood code." And I was like, "Hold the phone. Inside my neighborhood, there's different neighborhoods?" And he's like, "Well, yeah." Like, who drew that map? He's like, "Well, I don't know." Okay. When you look at these properties side by side right here, zooming in to those two properties, I mean, these are the properties on the street. So the dirt under that house is moving like the big green spike. The dirt next door is moving at the little ones. It's a 200% difference. Okay. In defense of assessors, I have a master's of urban design. I'm trained as an architect and a planner. Can you get a master's degree in property assessment? No. They just take a test. They get into a job and learn from people that were there before them. That's a systemic bias of how they get trained. What he doesn't understand is Monford Avenue was where the streetcar ran, right? The streetcar was where all the rich white people lived. All of their help lived a block or two away in little pockets in the neighborhood. The legacy effect of, of redlining aligns with the way that our tax assessment is, and it shows right there. This is a reverse Robin Hood. When you look at Reggie's neighborhood, notice how all the tax neighborhood codes are level? We call this gentrification. That, "Hey, Joe, it's not my fault. You moved into the neighborhood. You set the new market value. Therefore, everybody's got the same value." Cool. That's what the law says. When you cross the street and go into Biltmore Forest, you see two transactions. Doesn't affect the rest of the neighborhood. In fact, the opposite is happening. So if you look at, this is a house 22 acres on the Blue Ridge Parkway. This is like being on the equivalent of the Bay for you all. It's a 16,500-square-foot house with a 3,500-square-foot finished basement. By the way, this, this is the owner of the Vanderbilt mansion, lives here. And so let's look at their tax value in 2011. What's the value of their property? $4 million in 2011. In 2021, it's how much? $3 million. How does a property in a really hot, desirable real estate market lose value in a community? Now, here's the other thing. This should be a $25 million property, but we'll put that aside and just see whether or not you're losing or gaining in that neighborhood. So about 50% of the houses in the wealthiest neighborhood in my entire state are losing value for a net loss of 40 million bucks. I wrote an, I wrote an essay on strong towns, and I argued for the case for urban renewal in rich, white neighborhoods. Because this is the definition, right? I mean, the Chads and Cassidys really need our help. Anyway. So Reggie's neighborhood has overpaid 1.5 million in taxes, and the richest neighborhood in our state is underpaid 4.4 million, which is a result of 111 schoolteachers that we're not paying for. So I challenged my county and said, "Look, if you're serious about reparations, we need to stop all of this, all of this damage, and don't raise my millage rate and ask for teachers. We should be paying them appropriately, not subsidizing a rich neighborhood." So anyway, that, what's going on with the redlined neighborhoods is that it, the redlined neighborhoods are growing at 21%, and our greenlined neighborhoods are only growing at 5%. And I, I think this is, I mean, it's criminal. And let me just jump ahead to a couple of slides.
Mr. Joe, you made the, the perfect argument, but we've been talking about equity and how important it is to understand the history. That's our first pillar.
Yeah.
Equity, health, and resilience. And you can't figure out what's going on and why it's going on until you kind of dig deeper into the history as to how it came about. And what you've given us here is, is priceless.
Well, the other thing is, I, I said to my assessor, "I can go into my, my nightclub, and when I, when there's feedback, I know my sound guy can tell me which knob to turn. Can you tell me which knob to turn in your tax system, why this is happening?" You know?
I don't know what to turn, but I can't believe the hypocrisy of some rich people in my ward that are concerned. Maybe I shouldn't be on mic. No, the hypocrisy of some, you know, rich people in my ward. I guess I could say this, but because, you know, Spar Road, they equate to, you know, like, it's gonna be low income. Well, that's gonna decrease the value of our house. Well, those numbers say it's irrelevant. It's like totally irrelevant, right?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's classist and racist is what they're saying. It's just different language.
There's like, no, your assessment's gonna be low no matter what happens there, right?
So if you think this is just happening in Asheville, New York City just went through this, where the Supreme Court in New York said this. Nearly everyone agrees that property tax system is inequitable and opaque and puts a burden on lower-income people. I sat down with my assessor, and I said, "Look, I got all day. You can explain this to me. I know what, I know the systems. I'm not an idiot. Show me which knobs to turn." And he couldn't. And I felt really bad for him because he grew up in Asheville. You know, he's like, he's a local person, and he's doing the best he can, but he's just never been given the tools, and he's perpetuating the same issues going forward. So we have to find a different way to do this. But this is 2024 in New York City. This is not, you know, Buncon County, North Carolina, right? Now, here's the kicker. That's just this summer. This is 1873, New York State. They have the same problem. By the way, one of my nerds, I'm, I love my team, great people. I don't even know how to do these maps that they do. T Decker worked with, with you all. T's amazing. And one of my team members went and took the test to be an assessor while we were doing this stuff. And I'm like, "Dude, that's super nerdy." And he sends me this screenshot from the assessor's test while he was taking it. And I was like, "Hell, no. Are they teaching this right now?" Those are the same damn four colors as redlining.
1873.
So I called up Larry Clark at the Assessors' Organization. I was like, "Dude, you gotta get rid of this." And he's like, "Oh, my." I'm like, "Oh, my, indeed." So you're probably wondering about your county. So let's go ahead and pull it up. Here's the study from 2019, uh, 2019, I think. So this is the university, yeah, 2020. University of Chicago did this. Your line's not straight. You're over-assessing the bottom 20%, under-assessing the top 60% for an effective tax rate. At the poorest two deciles, you're about a 1 to 1.1. At your bottom, or your, your wealthiest two deciles, you're below that. So, you know, there's room for improvement. Basically, if you're in the bottom 10%, you're overpaying $200 a year. If you're in the top 10%, you're underpaying 1,200 bucks a year. Back to your comment.
Where did we get that?
I'll give you this email. This is University of Chicago. But this is, when people ask me, we, we do this analysis in other places, and they ask me when they see the Buncon County show. By the way, my, my county didn't do anything, so now I go on the road to national conferences and show what my county did, and I get the same reaction from everybody. They're like, "You, you live with crazy people." I'm like, "Yes, I do." So they ask if, if we could do the similar analysis. I always go to this site, and this is the first test of, is there a failure? But again, it's, how do you increase community literacy around this? How would you start talking about this? Because facts matter, and so does history. So does knowing the history of redlining and all this. My county commissioners told me, they're like, "Well, you know, Biltmore Forest is just not gonna be happy about this." And I was like, "Oh, poor Biltmore Forest. Let me get my little violin." And I've actually, I, I, I do this. I mean, you probably know me well enough now. I actually do, like, like dinner parties in Biltmore Forest. I'll go in at night, like, dressed like this and do a PowerPoint presentation at people's houses. And to a person, they're just like, "This is screwed up. We don't need this. This is wrong. We should change it." So the citizens there are aware that this is wrong. It's just my political leadership is just too chicken to change the system. So, anyway. Thank you for indulging me with this. This is...
Thanks so much.
All right, and...
And, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, do you have any additional questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Alderman Gay, or, uh, do you still have questions, sir?
Um, probably not. I don't think there's. Basically, very much answered my question.
It does look like you, by the way, your cartoon.
Homestead tax, I, I, I'm just quickly, because we're over 5 o'clock at this point. The homestead I walked in, are you talking about the homestead tax credit? And so you mentioned it being a bad thing. To my knowledge, it was a good thing. I thought, you know, people took advantage of it to purchase housing when they couldn't necessarily afford to do so. And by the way, our governor, the governor of Maryland used the homestead credit to purchase his mansion in Baltimore. At least that's how they wrote it in the Baltimore banner. So I'm just curious how you, just your thoughts on it.
Well, it is, it is a benefit, but, um, it's a benefit to only certain people that can buy houses. So it may expand the, the reach that somebody could now buy a house, but what you'll find is that usually the market responds just as quick. So what used to be a $180,000 house now becomes a $200,000 house once the, the rule passes, because the realtors know that they can sell the houses for more, because it's gonna expand the buying purchasing power for a citizen. Just drives up the price of housing. The same is true when interest rates drop. When interest rates drop, you typically see housing prices go up, because the purchasing power goes up for the individual. But for that, that individual that doesn't have enough income to be able to buy a house, they're trapped. They're left behind in the rental world.
Can you just break that down just quickly for me, because we're pressed for time? I don't, if the credit, i- if it's providing the tax, uh, break, how is that doing the opposite of what it's intended to do? And, and, and why do you believe that the market will adjust itself so that the home would become more affordable?
Well, just, just watch the price of housing reflected against the interest rates, and you'll see it spike every time the interest rates go down. And it's because the ability for someone to buy a house, my purchasing power gets greater, because what would have been my mortgage under 8%, I can buy more house when it drops to 6%. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the realtors know that, and they tell the, you know, it isn't their, so, but, again, don't hate the player, hate the game. The realtor will tell the client that's selling the house, kick the price up a little bit, because now you have more people that can buy more house.
So it, well, it only work if the market is in a mess and the interest rates are high, then you would take advantage of something like that? But if the interest rates are low, you're saying it's, it's not really?
No, when the interest rates drop, the housing prices go up. Does that make sense?
Okay, okay.
Because your purchasing power goes up, because.
I'm seeing it, I, I was thinking it backwards, as the rate drops, the purchasing power would go up as well.
No, when the rate, when the rate, well, yeah, yeah, your purchasing power goes up, which means the housing prices go up, because I can buy more house on the same income. Now, what happens, what's, with the, with the housing, the homestead, can I get homestead when I'm a renter? So I'm still paying rent, right? So if you're taxing that property owner, um, you know, the property owner's just gonna pass the tax cost on to the renter. The renter's gonna pay for it. So if that renter doesn't get the tax break, they're paying more per square foot.
For what they, yeah.
Yeah, so it's actually a burden on renters.
You also mentioned, I mean, you, you, you answered my question about, um, or Alderman Fen Lason answered the question. I was gonna also provide the answer. Density doesn't necessarily have to be height. I mean, we, it, there are so many ways that you can put eight houses on one lot. It doesn't mean you need five stories, and so I appreciate you clarifying that. The taxable versus non-taxable, I thought that was an interesting slide, um, and if you could provide that for us, that'd be helpful, in particular, looking at the gray spaces where, you know, this is all the land that we can't tax. I agree, the county and state owe us everything. Our finance director doesn't believe so, because she believes that although the county does not pay us taxes, they provide us, you know, a regional, a bu- a bus, you know, they, their bus connects to us, they help us in so many other ways. I call BS. You know, if the tax rate says that this property is worth X amount, and you're supposed to pay 1.5 million, and you're only giving us $225,000, somebody's being shorted, and that's our constituents. And so that, uh, slide was incredibly important. The one thing I didn't, I, I, I just find trouble with, I support this theory that, you know, density, you know, helps the, the city and its tax base. But maybe you didn't allude to it, because you don't know the solution, but I'm, I'm wondering, okay, yes, you add more people, but then you add more traffic, and you add the need for more services. And our city can't provide it. I mean, we just, we, we don't have the financing to do so. Now, maybe if we create the density, then we get more money, then we have more financing to do so. But how do you do both? How do you add to the density, but also, you know, provide for our, you know, the, the transit system? Because you have a thousand more people, they need to get in and out of the city. How do those things work hand in hand? And, and lastly, if you could also just summarize, how do you do all of this without killing the middle-class family? Because I think that's what's so important. You know, we do have, in the city of Annapolis, you know, Wardor, and you have Eastport Terrace and Harbor House, but somewhere in the middle, you know, maybe parole ideally, or Ward Four, where there's like more middle-class families, they just are taxed to capacity. And so how do you alleviate or provide, um, you know, tax solutions for them, so they, they don't feel that they're paying the, uh, the brunt of this? Progressive tax, maybe? I support that too, but, in, in, in your expertise.
Well, I'd say progressive tax. First of all, I, I don't know what kind of expert I am. I'm trained as an architect, so don't, don't overassume on me. I don't have a finance degree. Um, you know, what I'm trying to do is show you a picture of what's actually going on. There's no theory here. This is math. So one plus one equals two. It's not a theory. And in this case, you've got your suburban patterns of development are, are indeed subsidized. Now, to raise everybody's taxes commensurate to what they should be paying would be a burden on them, but there's other additional burdens that aren't being captured in here. For one, um, there's the burden of car ownership that you're forced into in those patterns of development, because you don't have the mass transit system. So that individual has to carry an additional burden of like, I don't know, I think the number's probably not closer to, uh, $9,000 a year to carry a car. You know, what does that do, or what does that take away in your ability to buy of a house, where that money should be going toward your mortgage? You know, I, I, I'd imagine you'll probably testify, how many miles do you put on your car a year?
Not much.
Yeah, living in density. I, I ride a bicycle to work. I've got a, 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 I've got this really stupid van that I bought with 425,000 miles on it. I bought it for 6,000 bucks, because I don't drive. You know, so it's, I can make different purchases, because I have my feet that I could use to walk to my job, or bicycle to my job. So that's a trade-off.
Can I take a, take a stab at part of that answer? This is not necessar- I, when I'm looking at this, this to me does not necessarily look like an argument for density, right? Townhomes, more value than multifamily, right, in general, right? And part of what you were talking about when you were answering the question about when is the land worth more than the building, part of the answer for that was what was the desirability of the land?
Yeah.
Right? And so I think that part of what this argument is about, is about balancing the service load with some density, but not necessarily crazy density, but that the pattern of development and the walkable community and, and things like that, that increase the desirability also affect then the assessed value, which translates into, translates into tac- into tax receipts. I don't think, I, when I'm listening to this, this to me does not sound like an exclusively an argument around density. That's not what I thought I saw here. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, go back to, go back to, you know, it's, aside from the fact that my friend Reggie's over-assessed in Asheville, um, he's actually tax productive, you know, so and it's, that's a single-family house, um, in a, in a low-wealth neighborhood. Um, now, I think it's more of an argument of, of doing the math on this. In defense of the assessor, you know, the assessor, this is kind of the, I guess, the sad tragedy of all this stuff, is that we wouldn't be able to do this work, be it not for the assessor tracking all of this data, having all of the shape files and the parcels, the maps, and the assessment stuff. So they are doing, they are providing a service at the city level, that it's, it's good that the assessor's doing that and providing this information. It's just, are you using this information, and are they using this information in a critical way to see what's going on in it, um, to make sure that it's fair and equitable? So I think as long as you have that conversation with the assessor, and just say, show me how this is fair and equitable, those are the, that, those are great words for them to dial them in, um, and they take it seriously.
My last point, um, to the point you made of the Naval Academy Stadium and the land around it, um, it is a whopping waste, and, again, I, I think the city of Annapolis does such a good job of getting in its own way. Our citizens are always complaining, oh, you tax us too much, it's, you know, we can't live here. And it's like, okay, well, allow projects to flourish, so that you don't have to carry the, the brunt of the taxes. When I look at the Naval Academy, you know, stadium, you think of places, um, or, or you, like Patriot Place, for example, which, what Bill Belichick did, or even in Atlanta, where Phillips Arena is, where they, or, or they play the, play baseball. They have created towns around these, uh, sports, uh, stadiums, realizing that people will still come to the game if they can't park outside of Gate B1. You know, look at Madison Square Garden, it's the, the most popular sports arena in the world. You know why? Because people can get on a train and walk right up to steps, and they have amenities surrounding it. And so I look at a lot of places like that. Baltimore is currently going through that process right now, with both Camden Yards and Immentee Bake Stadium, where they're like, wait, we have 15,000 parking spaces that we really don't need. We could be adding buildings here. That are housing or, uh, uh, commercial use, increase our tax base, that goes back into the stadium, that goes back into the city. And so, yeah, when I look at the Naval Academy Stadium, that, I can't recall a time in, in the 14 years that I've probably lived here, that has been sold out ever, except for maybe a graduation. And I went to a graduation when Barack Obama spoke here in his first term. That was the only time I've ever seen it sold out. So it's not like, you know, the, the place is booming with, with, with activity. If you even take the, the north end of that field and, and, you know, put a few commercial, uh, uh, buildings there, low, you know, three, four stories, you know, a small walkable road just around it, it changes the community, but it also provides that tax relief that I think our residents desperately need. Somehow, if this could be, you know, the wonkiness of this could be transitioned into a, a, a just plain message to the constituents that says, you, you could pay less with, with, with more in your community. I, I just think that'd be perfect, but I appreciated this presentation definitely.
If I may offer, um, one is, you know, even though I showed that the county system currently has a little inequity in it, um, have a conversation with them with grace that they're trying the best they can, but also realize they gave you a tremendous gift with this analysis that they did with the Government Finance Officers Organization. So they basically opened the door for you to have that conversation with all the non-taxable real estate. So this is the county's total value, and they said, well, we're gonna put our non-taxable, let me, let me show you a different way of looking at this real quick. So we did this, duh, 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 back in 2018, I think, um, Salt Lake County reached out to us. Sorry, I'm going through a lot of slides. Here we go. They have a strong mayor for the county there, or then, this guy Ben McAdams, um, and he had seen this Swedish guy do this presentation on public assets. Dog is, he's the Minister of Industry for Sweden. In Sweden, he's kind of like Ronald Reagan, but if you dropped him in the United States, he's Bernie Sanders. He's kind of wild. I, I talked with him, he's like, you Americans, you don't understand capitalism. You're crazy, you're stupid. Like, when we have an old hospital, we don't sell the old hospital, we rent it to a hotel developer and take that money and, and pay for artist housing. So we keep that asset, and 40 years from now, we get the building back. It's our asset. Or, um, this is another example of a wharf that they're building out, 33 housing units, 100,000 square meters of workspace, 20,000 student university, and the city is participating in, in profit sharing with the developer on this thing. So they're basically trying to solve problems by building housing and working with the private, you all did this with your parking deck, basically, or a very similar pattern. So we did the whole county this way, um, and I'll give you like an example. We found stuff like this. This is, the city's sitting on this, 1,000 feet away from a transit stop. They're basically wasting this real estate for garbage trucks. There's a developer already building over here, so we're like, look, you can just take that development and rubber stamp it in here four times, like, this is dumb. They could get $80 million. But anyway, let me scale it up to the whole thing. So we did the whole county, um, and, you know, we didn't, we didn't throw the airport in, the sides of the mountains, the county's 50% non-taxable, which is a lot for a county. But a lot of that's mountains on both sides, um, estuaries, part of the lake up here, but gluing together all the blue parcels, and there are a lot of cities here. You can see all the different cities here. Salt Lake City up here, um, this is West Jordan, but this is the amount of land that they're sitting on, that they could put into the asset pool, and these are the building footprints there. So we just went ahead and said, let's just develop that, that, that orange stuff. It could be teacher housing, it could be off, uh, housing for firefighters, whatever, just things that are affordable for your community business incubation. That would yield $45 billion. So your county is currently worth 131, and you're in control of growing 45 on top of that. This is what you could be, this is essentially what your county did with that study that I just showed you. So it actually would, I would recommend going out and reaching out to the county and saying, hey, let's the two of us talk with the, the, the football stadium about, I mean, heck, you've got, you mentioned several projects. I would just stop at Camden Yards. You know, it's like, you have that, like, right there. They build housing right in the outfield. Why not? There's lots of football stadiums. You mentioned several different projects. So they, like, you have that opportunity, and on game day, maybe there's a parking garage in there that can handle a lot of the parking, but you build other stuff around it. Does that make sense? But I, I think you've got a great opportunity, that your county's willing to have that conversation, because they already started that, that study.
Of course, you're clearly for the neighborhood that didn't want the motorcyclists at the stadium. It's a, it's a tough neighborhood, as far as not in my backyard. Yeah.
All right, everyone. Considering that this has been a two and a half, very hour, but very informative presentation, I think we can conclude our meeting, unless there's anything else for the good of the